Clear this board session. First order of business tonight is presentation from the Black Village Family Advisors.
All right, I want to introduce to you smaller members that are going to be joining us online. But just for some historical context, the Black Village family joined us about a little over a year ago. And they had formed together to create a system and a structure where our students and our families of our students who identify as black, African or African American could come together in the community to bring forward ideas, suggestions, recommendations, and a place for them to have community. And then we went into the lockdown. And so most of their stuff has been virtual that they've been providing. This year, we have the unique opportunity to have Dr. Zalise F. Akins, who's here in the back over here. Who's been working very closely with the Black Village family as well as I, but more so her. And so I'm going to turn it over to Anna, who's going to introduce the board.
Hi, everyone. This is Anna Bradley. Can you all hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, we can.
Okay, so I'm here from Black Village. I am the Black Village Chair this year. And currently have a son that's going to Tobias Elementary School. And we also have some other members from the Black Village as well. So I'll turn it over to Jelana to introduce herself.
Hello, I'm Jelana Canfield. I am the Secretary for the Black Village. And my son goes to Witch Hazel.
I can jump in. My name is David Steinhauer, and I have a nine-year-old, fourth-grade daughter going to West Union Elementary.
And hello, hopefully you can hear me. My name is Jemai Cherry. I am the Vice Chair of the Black Village and the proud father of a 12-year-old who's at HOA.
All right. Thank you all for having us at the meeting today. We wanted to come and share with you a little bit more about first what we've done. And we've been working on the last half of the year. And also, we had a chance to hear from our students as well. So we also wanted to share a little bit more of what we heard from them. So the main topic for us today will be just mental and emotional health, just with everything that's happened in the past year and a half. And now students are returning to school, some at school, some still at home. You know, this has been a topic on a lot of people's minds, including us as well. The last board meeting, when we met with you all, we wanted to see if we could establish a working relationship, a collaborative relationship where we could work towards the same goals or similar goals. So from that last meeting, we heard that this topic, emotional social learning, emotional social health, and mental health was an area that felt like a good collaboration between our PAC and the board. And I'm hoping that's still the case. I know that we have some new members on the board. So I just wanted to check in about that, if we're still on board with that type of relationship going forward.
Yeah, we're good. Sure. Yeah, I think that's pretty representative of everybody. Well, it's not supposed to be. Any board members have something they'd like to add?
I promise it will be the only thing I say today, but it is so good to see you guys. I miss you. I miss you. I miss you.
And the only thing I wanted to mention was that I think the next item on our agenda tonight, right after this presentation, is a presentation on our social emotional learning. So I think it would be great to have, and I know it was planned like this, but for us to figure out what your input, perspective, and maybe feedback is around that, and then for us to hear that other presentation. I think that will help our board, but I'm also very happy to see everyone again and happy to have you join us and glad to collaborate.
Okay, yes, I did see that on the agenda as well, and I was excited about that. So in hearing from our students and in working together last year, there are certain needs from our students that they were mentioning quite clearly when it comes to, you know, social and emotional health, their social and emotional health for black students. So one was they were looking for safe spaces and feeling that need to have that. And then also being able to identify staff that they could go to when things came up for them. And not knowing who to go to. It wasn't necessarily who they were supposed to go to, but who they felt comfortable going to. So that was another need we were hearing. And then also wanting to feel like their voice was being elevated and they were being heard through the different planning and the different discussions. So we are here also to help elevate their voice as well. And so I'm hoping that in the future, or sometime in the near future, that board members would be willing to meet with them in a safe space, maybe where they feel comfortable and hear directly from them a little bit more about, if you're curious about what that safe space would look like for them, or ways that the school can create those type of opportunities for them. So, but those are the three main things that we were hearing that they were looking for. And I know that last spring, there was a student panel that was created where the district Superintendent Mike Scott got a chance to hear from underrepresented students, their view. And some of us got a chance to sit in on that. And I thought it was very beautiful and intentionally done to where, you know, us adults were there, but the spotlight and focus was on the students. And they had a chance to speak without us kind of interrupting and butting in, but just be present for support. So I'm not sure if you all had a chance to hear more about that and if there was any next steps coming from that panel.
So I'm a student at Glensville High School, and I was a part of that panel last year, working with like the many first like student that was like, running it was Amari. She graduated. So as like Vice President of our school's National Activity Club, we are planning on connecting with other high schools and planning another one soon. We're mostly just because like the beginning of this year is kind of chaotic, but we are planning another, having another one very soon.
Okay, okay. Yes, because I thought for some of us that were a part of that panel, it was very impactful to hear from the students, their experiences, and also what they were needing and feeling too. So I'm glad that you all are kind of moving forward in that direction. And also for our students, we as a PAC are hoping to kind of be more in communication and collaboration to, to see how we can support as well. But one of, I wanted to share with you all, one of the things that the students did do that I felt was, we wanted to highlight as somewhat somehow an example of a way that some of these spaces can be created. So I'll turn it over to Jelana, who was present and was part of it.
Hello. Last year, in celebration of the first official Juneteenth, it was a student-led from BSU president put on a Juneteenth celebration at Century High School with a lot of support from the Century High School staff. Some other members of our PAC and myself were there, and we had a wonderful time. It was incredible experience. And it created a great safe space where we could celebrate our culture and speak our minds and share experiences as part of the Hillsborough School District. And it allowed the students to meet staff and families that are there to support them. I think it was very important that it was student-led. It was very empowering for our black students, especially the president of the BSU, to know that she could take the lead on this event, and the district, the school, our PAC, the community supported the event. It was a great way of having a sense of belonging. We do recommend that in the future, we can get some more support early on. So one, it doesn't conflict with another important school day, the last day of school. So attendance was low, but it was on the same day as the last day of school for the district. And two, just getting the word out more in each school's newsletter, on the website, and more support. Another way to create safe space, well, that's creating the safe space. Another way to show that students have someone to talk to. We are familiar with the Cairo Grant that the district is supporting, and we're very grateful. The grant will bring in liaisons that are African-American to support one at the district and two or three at different hubs. This will be a great chance for black students to know that they have someone that they can go to and be able to support them and know exactly where they're coming from. So this grant is very, very important. I also attended the Family Engagement Liaison Engagement Welcome Event where we all got to talk, all the different PACs. And I did notice that there was no family liaisons of African-American or black descent. So this grant is vital for our students to know that the district is supporting them and thinking of them and their needs of having representation in faculty and staff.
And thank you, Jelana. And also, to highlight some other efforts, we've been working with Sergeant Leland Gilbert of the Youth Division Department at the Hillsborough Police Division. And we worked with him more closely this last year. And it was really wonderful to see that he was interested in working with us and working with the community in ways that they can create a sense of discomfort and safety around the SROs. So he's the supervisor of the SROs. And part of the process was very intentional. So he did come to our PAC to ask for questions during the hiring process that he felt would be helpful to ask potential candidates for SRO positions. And we were able to provide that and hear from our parents and provide a set of questions. And also sent a representative to the hiring process so they too can have their lens on interviews and give their feedback on who they felt would be appropriate or a good fit for the students and in the schools. So Francesca actually represented the PACs during that hiring process. And so I'm hoping as efforts are going forward, as there's efforts to create these safe spaces, that they would be intentional in including the community, including the students, including the families. So it would be, I would say, a better, not necessarily a better experience, but just where students are feeling like, yes, this is what I had in mind, and families are feeling like, yes, okay, this, my student is feeling supported. I can see that they're having a good experience, a positive experience while they're going to school. So I thought that was very nice that that relationship is being built and will continue to building in the future with the Youth Division of the Hillsborough Police. And then we've also been having conversations with the administration, the school district administration, on other ways to create spaces where students can partake in their culture, have a sense of coming together and connecting. As we know, mental health and emotional health may not just be strictly talking with someone. That is a very Western way of doing healing as well, which is helpful. But in some communities, it can be more communal, where people and students are feeling like they're connecting to their culture, they're connecting to others from their culture, they're coming together in celebration or in healing. And so those are powerful impactful ways too of promoting positive mental and emotional health. So we were talking more about, you know, some of these celebrations, some of these holidays, some of these things. And having a black graduation ceremony of celebration separate from the main graduation celebration might be a nice, you know, bonus or something that students and staff and administration can all work towards. We talked about, you know, maybe presenting a kente cloth too, which for our culture is something that, you know, it's recognizing students as, yes, you've reached a milestone. And that we as a culture, as a community, recognize that. So just some of these different things that, you know, maybe we can partner with the administration and staff and students as a way of coming together to create some of these spaces for students. And like I said, these are some ideas from the parents, and I know for the Juneteenth, that was student-led. So some of the students may have some ideas too of how they can come together or ways they can be where some of these opportunities can be created. But I do know from a cultural aspect, speaking generally, you know, recognizing that we all don't come from the same culture. You know, there's Afro-Latinx, Afro-Caribbean, African, African-American. But that's something of the aspect is that communal connecting and healing and celebration piece. And this will give the opportunity for other students and other folks to also be a part and experience and be a learning opportunity as well that students can connect with after. And so we wanted to stress that during this time, not only is mental and emotional health is on the forefront for, you know, a lot of folks, but the importance of now that students are returning back to their classrooms, now that we've experienced a lot of different things in society, ways that we can create some of these healing spaces, ways that we can create some of these spaces where students can connect in a way that's healing instead of polarizing. Ways that we can hear from students to see what they need, and for us specifically, our black students, what are they needing? And how can they feel safe? And how can we wrap around them as a village? And that's our slogan. It does take a village. How can we wrap around these young people as they're going through and navigating their education experience? So we wanted to highlight the importance of that during this time and have that on you all's forefront as you're meeting. So anything for village representative, anything else you all want to speak to before? From the board, any questions or anything coming up for you?
If we'll give the people online opportunity first, and then we'll go around and go here.
I just wanted to mention that at our last board meeting, we actually voted on our board goals. And we have three goals, and two of the three are, one, to intentionally use student input to improve our policies and procedures. And the other, and to create feedback loops with the different PACs where we hear information or feedback that you can see how that has actually impacted our procedures or our policies and where you can see that we're using that information to make those changes. But the other one is also to continue to seek engagement opportunities and with an emphasis on historically underserved families. So this is, everything that you're talking about is really, I think, in unison with what we voted in our last meeting, that for this year, this is what our goals and our work is going to be around. So I think for us, and I can't see everybody in the room, but for our administration as well, is how can we have some sort of way of tracking all of the things that we heard this year from the different PACs? What are the different initiatives that are going on? And then at the end of the year, we can kind of have that assessment with all of you to say, here's what we heard at the beginning, here's what we were able to accomplish our work on, here's what's a longer-term goal, but really have like a plan of action that we can have some accountability and then also figure out what the next work is going forward. So I definitely think that a lot of the things that you all mentioned are, we, I think we all align in that and are very supportive of.
Thank you, Erica. That's good to hear. So it sounds like we are aligned or we're aligning. So this is definitely a positive for us too. And that slides in actually to part of our recommendations as well. So I'll turn it over to David to speak more to that.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think the, and thank you, Anna. Yeah, that's a good segue there because, and it was, I was glad that you mentioned that because one of the topics that came to mind in our meetings is how do we measure success, right? And does what our vision of success as the Black Village, you know, align with the district? And, and, you know, we certainly want to work alongside you in kind of reaching that goal and making sure that we are on the right path, or do we have to course correct? I believe the last time that we were on this call, or myself, was the one where we discussed the SRO. And I think that that conversation came to fruition based on a survey that went out to, I think it was all, all parents, all families, all gender and demographics. But when looking at the black community, you know, the results were skewed, and so then here we have that conversation. And to me, I'm thinking, do we need to do that in other instances as well? We had a meeting where we're looking at black suspension rates versus the other demographics. And in a lot of these categories, the only student population that scored lower than black students is students with disabilities. And again, this isn't, you know, I'm just putting this out. These are some of the conversations that we're having. It sounds like you all are having some of these as well. But how do we look at these numbers, these metrics, what's important? And how do we measure that and increase, you know, the outcome for black students? Not only black students' success, but for everyone's success as well. But when you look at some of these numbers and you can see these discrepancies, what can we do to improve that?
Lisa, did you have something you want to add?
Sorry for the delay. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for, for being here tonight. I just wanted to echo basically everything that Erica said and just add, which I think is a good connection to what David was sharing. I would love for us to find a way to make sure that our work is aligning. And, you know, like Erica was talking about with that feedback loop, we often like, we'll meet and then we don't do the best job following up and tracking. Like Anna reminded us that we had been talking about SEL work previously. And I would love for us to maybe put into our, our meeting plan that we make for the whole year, like checking back on those things so that we can make sure we're following through and remaining on the same page. I think that'd be really useful. So that's my suggestion slash ask. And that's, that's for Mark and Mike and Rose.
Oli, do you have something you want to add?
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. I appreciate the presentation and, and all the information. I don't have anything specific in the way of questions just yet, just kind of formulating some things in my mind. So I will definitely be reaching out to you.
All right. Anybody in the room have something they want to add? One question I sort of have is, we've seen the Latinx PAC using sort of a hub and group model. Maybe that's not the exact word, but like a district advisory committee and then advisory committees at various schools. Is that, is that sort of a plan of action for the Black Village, or is that sort of not a model that we want to try to use?
So right now, we're meeting with, we've been meeting with the Equity Team. And last year, we were meeting with Vice Superintendent Travis Raymond and some key folks as well, John Allen, one of the principals. And so this year, we're hoping as we're working with the Equity Team that, you know, some plans and information will be relayed back and forth. If you all are thinking of having more of a strategic type of a meeting plan where we're meeting with you all, the board, more than twice a year, then that's something I guess we can collaborate on. And we're willing to have board members at our family engagement meetings too, because I think the parents would, would love to hear from you all and meet, you know, some of you all too.
Everyone's conducted virtually at this point still, right?
Yes.
But I just wanted to thank you as well for your efforts. We appreciate the advocacy and really just the bringing to our attention of, you know, just some of the processes and systems that are in place and how we can improve those. I too really enjoyed the student-led and facilitated conversation that we had last spring. Oftentimes when we have conversations with students, it's very adult-driven. And we ask for their feedback, and this was entirely the opposite way. And it had a whole different feel to it. And I think the amount of information and the honesty and the information that was shared was, it was really impressive. So I love that model. Looking forward to doing that again. And do know that as a district, the board has aligned their goals that are very similar to yours. We are very deliberately wanting to reach out. We're also looking for additional student voices. And we, you'll see many instances of that as we move through the year. I mean, as a district, those are, we value the exact same thing. So we're anxious to continue to work together and see the future of all.
Thank you. Thank you. That sounds great. And I do want to emphasize, so for, you know, meeting with our students, again, they mentioned safe space. So I would urge you all, sorry, that's my little one. I would urge you all to see ways you can meet on their turf. Because there's some brilliant, you know, voices in there that, future leaders, you can see them in the community as future leaders. So please take that time to see, you know, how that can be arranged. Like the student, the student representative, I forgot what, what that student's thing was. I can't see on the screen. Was mentioning, there's another opportunity for a panel to do another panel, which is encouraging. And I'm hoping that it won't just be talk, you know, once we hear from students, where are the next steps in actions? And so I would just want to leave you all with that. Try to meet on their turf. And like I said, for us, we're willing to have board members at our meetings. It's mostly adults. We have a couple of students, but the black student unions do have their own meetings too that I'm sure maybe they'll be glad to have you at too.
Do you have something to add? Then maybe Nancy will close it out.
So I am not black, but I would, I want to say, I really appreciate like the work that you guys are doing. And I think that like, from a student perspective, lots of our goals really do align with like the Black Village family's goals. Like, and I think like what you said about safe spaces, identifying the, like a staff to go to, and also like feeling encouraged. I think that's like, those three are, I would agree, is like for a lot of the minorities, at least at Glencoe, that's, we feel the same way. I want to say like, also like, from a student perspective, like I think we're trying to build like structures and like a community where this isn't like, even after we're gone, they'll continue like, and that there are going to be more voices, and we're uplifting those voices. And I think that like, also about like, helping students find their own voice and helping them express that voice. Because I think a lot of them have ideas, but they don't know where to go. I think that's like, we're all something that we're really figuring out. But I would, like, I really want to like continue to like, and reaching out to like the Black Village family and like working together more and stuff like that.
Did we have a hand up? Oh, we do. Yeah, okay. Sorry.
And real fast, Mark, you mentioned if we were going to have more representation.
And real fast, Mark, you mentioned if we were going to have more representation at each school um down the line. But I think that's another sign the importance of the Cairo Grant. We need representation and not just from family volunteers, but from staff positions.
Um I just wanted to take a moment to uh reflect just a little bit on where this organization started. I cannot help but have a big, huge smile behind this mask and tell you how good it feels to see the faces that you see before you today, having the conversations that were happening, making the plans and looking at the evolution of the conversation that were happening. I remember when Travis would have those conversations with us and it was just ourselves. And we could not have imagined at that time where we are to have a personal crevice seat at the table where we are today. So I just wanted to say that to the steering committee, to the leadership of the Black Village, thank you, thank you, thank you. It is so good to see your faces. Anything we can do, I love, love the idea of doing something slightly different in recognition for some of our other students with regard to Latinx, with regard to Black and or Africans, especially in graduation ceremonies. Because as all of us know, they do this at university all the time. And it's a wonderful ethnic experience that they just, they roll into the whole mix of things. And it's really a wonderful experience. So uh we'll be back in touch. It's just good to see you guys and I just wanted to say that, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good to see you too. And we'll be sending you all the slideshow for the Juneteenth celebration so y'all can see.
I wanted to take an opportunity to um give a special shout out to Jemai because he is now my new staff member. Hey, so he is our multimedia specialist and has been with us now uh since October 1st. And we are absolutely thrilled to have him on our team and um just so excited for what the future is going to bring with Jemai.
Likewise, very excited.
All right, thank you guys for joining us. Thank you for being here today. Um and Michelle, let's put that in the back of the table. Rose will probably be available to help you connect with other high schools. Uh all right, next up, Francesca and Brooke. Brooke's here again, right? Yeah.
I'm here.
Uh to discuss, I haven't updated our social emotional learning.
All right, Rose, do you have the slides ready? I'm waiting for your cue.
Oh, okay.
So this year, Brooke and I have been working in partnership in bringing a culture and system of care um together for our staff and so that affects our students. And by culture of care, it's about that social emotional learning, that mental health of um using social emotional learning as a lever for equity work and the work that we are doing through a system and culture of care. And so we're going to go over in response to, but also to inform you so that you know what we are doing with mental health, social emotional, social emotional learning, trauma-informed care in our district as we are moving forward. Um hopefully one day to say we're coming out of a pandemic, but as we move through the pandemic and moving forward. Rose, you have a slide?
Yes, I do, okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Brooke Nola. I'm the Director of Student Support Network and Current College Pathways. And for those who are new to the board for students and new board members, I can put it below and introduce myself. And I'm so happy to be in person with everyone.
So our partnership works a little like this, Brooke brings in this much and I try to amount to. And she she works a lot with her counselors and um and our counselors and our college and group pathways. Because in the end, we know what we are doing as a school is building that capacity for our students to see and imagine themselves beyond. And that takes equity, that takes social emotional learning, that takes being informed about trauma. That takes all of that, that goes into making that full child. Um that's what creates that strength. So we're going to go over today, a culture and system of care, the welcome back conferences that I touched upon last time. Um but to give you a little bit more background, the social emotional mental health, and I have questions for you. Um question and answer time for you. And hopefully for those that are on the um Black Village family, this might answer some of the questions for you in in regards to what are we doing to help our students? What are we doing to help our minoritized or historically marginalized students? And what are we doing as a system to help support our kids? Next slide, Rose. So all of our administrators read this book called Leading the Rebound. In one of the sections, there's this great quote, and I don't need to read it to you, but I, it would be great if Rose, you could move the screen over to the tennis shoes so that people can get a full, or is that Kelly? Kelly. Kelly, you got it. Um just be thinking about, when we're talking about rebound, we have a once in a lifetime opportunity to reboot teaching and learning as we know it so that we can magnify effective practices from the past while leveraging so many recent lessons, lessons learned. And what we have, what became elevated in this time is that the work that we do with our students wasn't serving all. And so as we move forward with both equity and social emotional learning is looking to create new levers for us and pathways for us as we help feed um a culture and system of care. And so part of our work today, oh Kelly, guess what? You get to move to the other side. This is straight out of um the work we've been doing and through ODE is that they wanted us to provide, and this was something we had already done last year, when we saw the writing on the wall last year. We had created this two-day in partnership with HGA and our um all of our unions and your support. We had created time and space for our students to connect with our families. And so what was recommended from ODE was to devote several days' time and space um at the beginning of the school year. And they had a big kickoff, which was called Care and Connections, they called it weekly, tried to make it about a month, where staff was really connecting with their students and building those relationships inside and outside of the classroom. And one of the other recommendations was to provide that ample class time at the beginning of the school year as well as ongoing to create those safe spaces, like our Black Village family top stuff. And then create opportunities and outlets for students and staff to make sense of the experience that they're going through and to process personal and professional emotions, trauma, grief, and stress. And then final one was prioritizing linking students and families with culturally responsive mental health services and support. So this was all in the resiliency framework of that ODE. And I'm happy to say that in partnership with those that we worked with at OSP as well as several departments, we were able to um recognize this through our experience last year, but also moving forward for our experience um moving into this year. So we set up things like morning meetings, which were already in place. This year, we expanded it by not only talking about morning meetings being the only time you do social emotional learning, that that is learned, that is throughout the day. And not only setting up advisory and secondary school. And advisory was that opportunity for us to engage in some social emotional work, but it was also a time to build self-advisory skills, um self-awareness skills for students. And also with them reiterating that it's not just one time and place in your schedule, it's throughout the day. So between a welcome back conferences, building this time into your schedule and really focusing, as you'll see, on the equity about linking the families and the students together and their culturally responsive um services and supports. We aren't perfect, but I think we've done a really good job with really moving that word forwards that we prioritize our students helping moving.
Francesca, could you transition? And this wasn't done on purpose, but I do think it's really important to acknowledge that both Yasemia Carmelenga, Efsenosa, and Dr. Denise Ethan-Aiken have been on this journey since we started the Welcome Back Conference work. And so I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge your leadership and say thank you so much for all the work that you've done.
There was one that you showed up.
I know, this was not by my purpose, but thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to acknowledge both of you and your hard work. It really kept it a lot of fun.
Yeah, it really kept us. So I thought that is a beautiful space to acknowledge that. And so the next slide talks about, well, what is social emotional learning in? And I just want to take us a second for us to to think about what social emotional learning is. Because it's important that we understand it so that when people out in the community are asking us, well, what is all this touchy fe- you know, feely stuff that you guys are doing in school? It's about building relationships and connections. And so we have started talking about rise, and that rise means relationships is everything, if you think of it as an acronym. And it is everything, it's the cornerstone of how we have entry points and access points for our students with the lens of equity and through social emotional learning. So it's a process through which adults and children acquire effectively um the ability to apply knowledge, attitudes and attitudes and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, to set and achieve positive goals, to feel and show empathy, which is huge for others, to establish and maintain positive relationships and to make relationship responsible decisions. Most of this comes from the CASL model um and the CASL framework. So if you ever want to learn about it, on the next slide, you'll see a nice little visual um that talks about what the CASL model is. Brooke, do you want to talk a little about the CASL model?
Sure, you know, a reason why we collected CASL is really also that multi-layer approach of looking at social emotional learning. And and that really was a a huge component of shifting to this nationally recognized model. Also, the equity elaborations that are teamed out into those five core areas as well was another reason of collecting this framework. And how it really is also integrated in many of the curriculums and resources that we were already using and how they align uh with our ASCA national model. Some of the components later on that I'll speak about align very nicely with CASL and the ASCA national models that our school counselors use with their framework moving to work forward as well. So when you think of self-awareness, self-manage- management, uh responsible decision-making, relationship skills, social awareness, those are all skills that we need to have our students leave our system packed in their backpack that's been visible and behind them. That's what's going to get them to that next level. That's what's going to make them functioning and positive and integral parts of our community is if they have developed that skill, those skills that'll help empower them when they're out in the community. And that isn't that what we're thinking of when we think of our students. When we think about our instruction, if you don't have a, if you, if you lack this type of relationship that you need to move social emotional learning forward, it makes your job ten times tougher. And I think of the windmill, if you build those relationships, if you understand your students, we are ready to make action, that windmill is going to build energy and it's going to go. But you take one of those off, the other two have to work a lot harder. So how much more effectively when you are approaching it through a social emotional lens? Can your windmill, that energy perpetuate itself? Okay, the next one. And you know, I think uh the three bullets that Francesca spoke of, a couple of slides, that really do fit these four areas and components that we look at. But also, as I was sharing, that equity overlay of when we, when we save these areas of support and focus, continue to ask the equity lens guiding questions that we use in most of our school districts, of what does that look like to serve our community and fully serve our community? And what are we doing well and why are we still missing the mark? How do we continue in that improvement practice? So having this side-by-side is actually a slide that we've used for the last two years of here's how we're going to focus and and strengthen those partnerships and relationships. I love what I heard from um our Black Village speakers is connect, feel, and build the capacity. I love that. But it, what does that look like when we serve all of our students and all of our families within our community?
And it's going back and reflecting on that question. If if you're, once you have these in place, you have to ask for your own accountability as reflective questions. Whose voice is and isn't represented? This isn't about Black, White, Brown, you name it. It's about making and ensuring that all voices are represented and heard in the decision-making process that we, we as educators, we as administrators, we as staff that support. We need, we should be reflecting and disperson in our header with others about what, what are we doing to hold ourselves accountable that we're asking ourselves these questions? So we did the Welcome Back Conferences, which you guys saw all the statistics last time. Rose, um Kelly, if you want to go home, and one more, which was wonderful. And so one thing that we also did with the Welcome Back Conferences this year, which were held was something we sent postcards to all of our families to ensure that they had a heads up before the 7th and 8th. Not everybody we know checks their emails, not everybody is going to check their mind, not everybody is going to read best beautiful newsletter. But sometimes, if you cover the base of old-fashioned snail mail, people do get that. So we could want to cover our base with that and um all of let, let our families have the opportunity to know that this is coming their way.
And I also think this is an invitation, right? We are inviting our families in partnership from the get-go. So in a postcard of that invitation, um in multiple ways, we want to invite our families and our students from the very beginning into our spaces and places. So I think that that is also a purpose and function of this, um is to create that invitation to that time of connection.
And so these were the four questions that we asked our um teachers to ask of their students. It was a homework, homeroom teacher in elementary and in middle and high school was their advisory teacher. And so these four questions were were listed above about how do you feel about coming back to school? Why do you feel that way? What support resources would be helpful? Um and some was um opportunities for response. And Dr. Finn can speak to that. We worked tirelessly on formulating the questions so that we weren't reading students to the answer that we wanted. It would have been easy to say, what are you excited to come back to school for? And that would have led them to feel that they should feel excited about something, when really truly, they were anxious and terrified of coming to school. So really working with the word circle, the power of questions. And so again, shout out to Zily Sanford, helping us with that human situation and the team.
This goes back, well, I think, to the data metrics. When we did this this first year, uh we didn't have the data to look at how many students and families completed a conference and what that looked like and and at each school. So I think it also helped us to refine our practice because we were able to gather it in a different way. And for us to then reflect moving forward, um how to improve either questions or connection. Um or if we do refine and create a a Google form moving forward into this school year, it's a nice starting space with some baseline data that we didn't have before.
And this one is going to also allow an entry point for um for staff members during conference time that they can circle back and ask those questions to those that will maybe identify as, please circle back with my child, child after quarter one, or um my, my family needs immediate help right now, their situations may have changed at the start of the year. Um so this, this frame of questions gave people a framework to start off from when they were having the conversations and building those relationships. Kelly, if you move one slide forward, we're going to talk a little bit about next step using our data currently and where we're going into the proper season. So you saw this data last time of eighty-two, eighty-three percent of our students said that at this time, they need, they don't need any support, about thirteen percent said, please monitor and check back in with me. And about five percent said it needed immediate response. And most of the immediate response was food support, maybe some um help or rent assistance. And there was some mental health that we were able to identify from that and connect them with care coordinators. Um or at their site, they might have um the ability to do life stands or one of the other providers that we um contract out with. It was a great starting point for us. I think um moving forward, our next step is, we really want to survey our administration and our families and know to find out if this is something that they want to see move forward in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, just to get their input on this. We did it last year because we knew they had sent, well, the end of the year after March thirteenth at home. And we needed a base point, but we didn't have, like Brooke said, uh, we were, we were making it up as we went. Year two came around and we're still kind of making it, but we're getting more refined. And so is this a practice that they want to see continue as we're moving forward? Or do they have some other ideas of how we can build those connections with our families um and with our, most importantly, our students?
The next one of our presentation is noting some of the work that we're doing within our buildings in real time. I have the honor and opportunity to work with our school counselors, as Francesca noted. And um we also run a counseling leadership team. So it's one elementary leader leader and then a middle and high school department leader per building. So in the summer, we work together to identify where we're headed for this upcoming school year. I think it was Monique. Monique, thank you for asking what the um letters and numbers meant. Those are the ASCA mine for some of the K-years that are identified within each of our quarter focus areas. So we appreciate that question. So we appreciate that question from the inspiring was played last week. So starting with healthy habits, then transitioning to skill building and building those relationships in school with peers, transitioning then to the career focus with executive functioning and then mental health and suicide prevention. In each of those areas, it's really also about that lens and focus of student connection, building community connection, and then building upon also what that looks like of knowing myself and my community within my school. But then that focus of the career component of it of how does that apply to career and college readiness moving forward? The CASL core competencies are also actually was outlined in the Oregon Employability Skills Framework for high school students, which really is who am I, how do I work collaboratively with others? And how does that apply to life after high school? So I love also kind of the building upon that framework for the year that our elementary council leadership had identified. I also want you to know though, as students needs pop up, for example, in council leadership last Thursday, they were talking with us that, hey, you know, we're going to take some of our mental health lessons that we were thinking about in quarter four and respond in quarter one. So the fluidity of what's identified also is in practice within our buildings. But this just creates a framework with twenty-six elementary buildings as a guide for moving work forward in the year. This also occurs both in middle school. Okay, this also occurs in middle school and then also high school as well. Now, in secondary, they were wanting to take quarter by quarter, identifying those mindsets and behaviors, which is kind of like academic power standards that we were thinking like as a math teacher. So this is like their counseling power standard, right? So they're taking quarter by quarter focusing on that. So for example, last Thursday, when we were in council leadership, our middle school team was dialoguing, dialoguing and discussing what it looks like currently, what they're building up for classroom guidance or in small groups to move this first quarter one work forward. Same for high school as well. Not only what does this look like in counseling practice, but both for middle and high school too. It's what, how they work in partnership with advisory and what takes place within that advisory time versus what takes place in classroom guidance support within our counseling department. Next. I could tell these a little bit into when I was mentioning advisory and Francesca was mentioning morning meeting. Some of our focus areas and curriculum work that we anchored to, so within morning meetings in that CASL framework, we also have adopted a tool called Panorama. There was a training for counselors just last week on the Panorama tools that align to the CASL core competencies and a playbook that teases out also some specific lessons that can be used not only within morning meetings, but also for counseling practice as well. Character Strong is our anchoring curriculum that we use for middle school advisory. And then this year, we have adopted a fifth high school counselor. Point two of their time is focused in middle school. So one day we start the middle school and then do some of those lessons because, right, it's about knowing self. It's that F E L component, but then the application to life after high school and what helps us like in their journey. I may be talking more about this in like thirty more minutes. So in the middle school advisory part, we're getting together the high school team across our district to create lessons collaboratively. And there's a thing that all buildings now are using in those four focus areas. Okay, I think we're almost there. We were almost there, Michelle.
Do you want to ask me your question now or wait till two slides?
Two slides.
Okay, Fran, okay. So I also wanted you to know that, thank you so much, our internal team has expanded. And in that, it's not only being able to support our building practices, but those community connections as well. How do we know in real time what's being created within our community nonprofit organizations? And how do we partner better and stronger in bringing that in? So having a team that can focus not only in that internal support, but that external community connection has been already so vital to moving out forward this year. Next.
Oh yeah, just real, what we've done this year with our meetings in order to bring in our building-based leaders is we're alternating our climate and culture leadership meeting and our equity leadership meeting, alternating months. So this month in October, I will lead us next week. Zylie Sand and Heather Fix will be leading the climate and culture with building principals are invited and they're building a leader. In November, we will work on equity. And so Yesa Pen, the team will also be bringing in principals and building leaders so that we can build that capacity. And it'll be alternating months for the remainder of the year so that we can see that self, climate and cultures, climate and culture is a lever for it.
Kelly, that's the next one. Oh, hey, our community partners, knowing here, here are the community organizations on the left-hand side that are in our buildings. We have four, we contact counselors in each of our high schools. We have two counselors that support Life Works Northwest within Brookwood Elementary and Patterson Elementary. And then formerly Western Psychological and Counseling Services, now known as Life Stand, supports ten of our elementary schools as well. If you see any of us still here, she would also attest though, that the partners plus on the right-hand side, we connect every other month and engaging and Francesca's been to this meeting as well, where we talk about what's going on in your practice, how can we better partner, here's what's going on in A and B, and kind of we continue to strengthen our relationships. So that's some of our partners that we've been working with over the last year and a half. Next. I also just wanted to note, what you see, we, we just did a new lanyard or ID card sticker distribution. Last month was suicide prevention awareness month. And so ensuring that all of our students in our middle and high schools have done that before with board support, thank you so much. With acknowledging, here are your immediate community connections and support. When you are home, when you're outside of school, here's where you can call and connect with me. They're by the bookmakers for every student. And we just, I did a new round of distribution on those. And then also that focus and continuation of the family engagement component workshop. I love that the invitation of continual collaboration. And then the district developed, let's say, the more that we can collaborate with one another. That helps to strengthen not only our messaging in our buildings, but also in that family support as well. And that helps, the law of politics, the messaging and outreach. Hey, I think we are done. I always just like to end with, this link is still alive and well. So if we know students and families that need any type of resources or support, please still direct them, direct them to the hyperlink. The second button on the right-hand side is how students and families can ask for resources and support. And our family engagement leads on team hall, make that connection. Thank you. Oh, yes, Michelle.
Yeah, so for the side by side, do you guys have like a team for like the advisory? Is it a tool that gets like students on that? Because I know that a lot of kids feel pretty strongly about advisory.
Okay, so at Glencoe, the two of these are Sammy Hayden and Tom Stevens. So we have me and I, one of my continual questions is how are you engaging student voice within your own advisory development? So I would say that if that isn't happening, I think that's a great feedback group for me to know about too. Because student voice and representation on the advisory high school team should be a part of moving that work forward in the building.
Well, like at Glencoe, we have our ASC president and vice president, like meeting with Hayden, but like, uh huh. I think we can try to expand that more because not many kids know about it. And I know that a lot of people feel pretty strongly about advisory. Um, because I think like, yeah, advisory is like a good thing. I think that sometimes students feel as if it's repetitive to them. And I feel like they sometimes don't feel as if like the, like the attentions aren't really like showing. And like, I feel like a lot of the, sometimes a lot of the teachers don't really, aren't as enthusiastic about advisory. And it's sometimes like hard to think and make the most out of it.
And then, Michelle, thank you for your feedback tonight. Thank you for waiting, not thank you for your feedback. I promise that our next quarter meeting, I'll bring that up as well of how do we strengthen that partnership. Thank you.
But to support what you're saying, we are meeting with secondary to talk about wellness, social emotional health. So Heather Fix, who's one of our new coaches for secondary, social emotional nervous supports is leading it. But Dr. Finn, myself, and a few others are on the team because I do think we need to talk about what that looks like in perhaps advisory, which is different than what we've done traditionally, traditionally in the past in elementary. So know that that is something that we all talked about too, and we do want to strive to make it better. So if that isn't the means of, of it, we'll figure out a way to, Dan, listen to your list.
Yeah. So for the elementary school, also this was something that like I personally am working on because I want to like get into, like I want to research. For elementary quarter focus, and you guys have sort of considered making one of like the goals, so emotional recognition, because like it seems really simple, but just like recognizing your emotions is like sad and like complicated emotion. Because I think that's a skill that surprisingly, a lot of people struggle with, just recognizing emotion, like how am I feeling right now? Like, kind of like, whoa, 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 whoa. Like when I first started counseling, the first question is like, how are you feeling? And sometimes that's a really hard question to answer. So I think like if we can start at the elementary school level, just like, not just, also not just basic emotions. Because like when the more is school, like elementary school, it's like, oh, so there's only three emotions, like sad, not happy. And it's like complicated.
I don't see hands up online. I think your dear has something.
Yeah, so the postcard that was sent home, was it like, if, let's say the sentence was Spanish, even with the sentence Spanish?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And then to Michelle, I actually have, you know, a daughter in elementary school. And so one of the things that I noticed last year online is that there was a lot of that on how are you feeling today? And so they had like to choose between different phases and stuff. And I could really see the little brain working as far as like, one, how am I feeling today? And so, you know, most of the times she'd be happy, but there were some days where, you know, she'd be like, I don't think I'm feeling happy, but I'm not feeling sad either. You know, so it is talked about at the elementary school level and we're starting to kind of explore that and like, and just be able to say like, really how am I feeling? And I had one more question, sorry. As a parent, I really appreciate the conference call before. And I felt like that really helped me connect. And then it really helped my child connect as well. So I mean, I'd be interested to find out how other parents feel about it. But like for my daughter, it was like really nice because I actually couldn't answer the phone when the teacher called. But she left the message and I played it for Emmy and she was like ecstatic. She was like super happy because she said, who's getting my teacher? So it took a lot of the mystery out and I can see that like it really put her in this, in this like frame of mind of like, okay, I am starting school. This is real. It's going to happen. And so, and for me, it was nice to know, like, this is what you're going to, going to expect on the first day of school. Like this is what we're going to do. This is where I want you guys to be at. And so all of that, I think, just made that first day so much so good. And from there, it just goes on and being able to like text the teacher, I think that is like amazing. I love that. So I mean, I feel like a communication from just like her as a preschooler and kindergarten like now, like I have way easier forms of communication with the teacher.
Like Nancy, I'm smiling under my eyes.
Yes, so a couple of comments and then some questions as well. I think to your dear's point, I, I do love and would, just how comprehensive and how wide-reaching these efforts have been and would love to see how we can incorporate this even moving forward post-COVID. I know that that takes an incredible amount of staff time and everything, but I think the results that we're yielding and the relationships that are being able to be strengthened through this, I think, are just phenomenal. So, yeah, I loved the presentation, loved just everything that's happening. A couple of questions that I have are, for the Welcome Back results, where you showed the pie charts of the different percentages of how people have responded, what is that a percentage of? How, I guess, what is the percentage of the number of folks that we were, families that we were able to reach?
Yeah, that's a great, so I just checked today and it was a little, it was like thirteen thousand three hundred over those first few days. Out of nineteen thousand.
Okay, wow, that's amazing, amazing. Yeah, yeah. And I would imagine that if those continue, you know, yeah, that, that would, that would increase hopefully. My second question was around the slide that had, that showed the community partners. Are we able to share knowledge of which students are receiving services from some of our community partners so that we can maybe keep a, I guess, closer eye or know how to check in with students? Or is that kind of protected information and they're now able to share who is receiving the services?
Well, internally, there is some information that can be shared with like the school counselor and the community partner and how they can wrap around and support the student. The other component of that too is Jenny Carey, who's our mental health coach, as she is working with each of our community partners and talking about what does that look like for HSE in practice of partnership, let's say, with Life Stand? But then how is that specific partnership in the ten schools working in each building? What is going well and what's not? But some of that direct student information cannot be globally shared, but can in connection with like a school counselor really ensure that that communication and partnership for that student and family is working well for, for that individual.
And we do have, when the, when students of concern come up, we have a process that is called care coordination. And so the care coordinator in each of the four theaters and the process goes through them. And then, and then they can, in partnership with school council, determine where they need to send them. I will say for the care coordination for this year so far, we're about on par for where we were in two thousand eighteen, nineteen before. We don't have really good raw data from nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one. But from going back to eighteen, nineteen, we're very similar to our work. Now, will that stay that way? I don't know because of that. I think the more we build those relationships and the more that people continue to have a conversation, we have a possibility of those members either spark it up or coming down. But our care coordinators, they're, it's comparative to where we were three years ago.
I think, I think that that's great. I feel like some of the things that I've seen volunteering at the CASL and working with wraparound services and working with just families who are receiving multiple facets of different services and people coming in and out of their lives, it's oftentimes so challenging because efforts are duplicated or, you know, they don't build on top of one another when you consider a, a child and the whole child from what's going on at home to what's going on at school. And the wraparound services and what I'm hearing with even the care coordinator is being able to really build on top of one another and strengthen the support that we give the child. So, yeah, thank you.
I don't see any hands online. Anybody? Oh, Erica.
Hi, Brooke. Hi, Fran. Nice to see you all. Thanks for the wonderful presentation. I, I too will share, I think, one of the feedbacks, I think, that Michelle mentioned, or I think your dear as well, is just on the vocabulary about identifying like feelings. I think I only knew like sad and happy. And as I've grown and, you know, learned more about emotional learning and self-regulating, all of those things, you need to also have the vocabulary. And I think that we're doing a great job now at starting at an elementary level. But I think to that other point about like middle school and high school, the students that have gone kind of through our system already, but haven't had the opportunity to develop that vocabulary. Are there ways that we can share, especially on those check-in ones, how they can understand the difference, the different ways of identifying the feelings? And what are the words that are appropriate, whether it's nervous or frustrated? There's, there's a variety of feelings that one can feel, especially right now with us navigating school. And so I just wanted to touch on that as well and say that I think that's an important, important point to make is that in order for this to also work, that we need to provide them that vocabulary and, and help everyone on that. And then the other thing that I wanted to ask was the, around the pie chart of Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to ask was the, around the pie chart as well is um, I saw the, I, I think um, Shan, you just asked about the response rate and all of that, but I, I wonder if there's a way of disaggregating that data so that we can actually see um, where are we getting the highest responses from and where are we not? So that we can then, uh, I think partner with that, that equity lens and look at, do we need to have a different approach? Um, and just thinking about, for example, our, our uh, community or students that may be experiencing houselessness or homelessness and sending a postcard might not be the best way, but what is another way of, of making sure that they get the same access to that initial start of the year? So um, just thinking about if that information might be available or just going forward, how we can continue to improve our process of collecting data.
We wrote that down.
And uh, so I'll rearrange my questions to tangentially attach to that one. So the um, the, I look forward to hearing about, you know, whether or not teachers, students, families found it productive to have, I guess it's called a soft start, maybe last year, but these conferences to start the year, like if it's something we're going to continue, like if, if administration is going to recommend that we continue that um, in the future, and I think if we do, I think one of the side effects we'll see is that it will become an expectation. So where, you know, and then it's starting the year completely in CDL. It's hard to quantify exactly what before they came. Starting the year this time, first time in person doing this. So I, I do wonder if, you know, thirteen thousand out of ninety thousand is a pretty good number. But I wonder if, you know, as it becomes the thing we do, it becomes the thing we do, we'll see that rate increase as people sort of understand like, oh, what I do at the start of the year is not show up to the building on day one, it's make sure I'm connecting with my teacher day one. So I, I, I look forward to hearing what the recommendation is. I guess the pie chart was a hit, because my other question was about the pie chart.
Okay.
You talked a little bit about how I, I think at one point you said the students were nervous or maybe you used the word terrified about coming back. So how does that sort of coalesce with the data that eighty-two point five percent said they didn't need it?
Right. When you disaggregate, there's a, all uh, principals, administrators got a spreadsheet that had their particular um, school and their demographics and they could sort it and we're getting a great demonstration for them last month of how to filter it for your own classroom. And then based on the classroom, then their, their task was to take it back to the classroom teachers and have them disaggregate that. If they had just a few that all were popping up with it, well, then that would be a counselor or a student success coach or somebody, and I'm talking with elementary right now. I need to, I need to connect with that. But if there was a global trend, then the morning meeting would be the place that they would be able to insert one of the pre um, pre-PD uh, lessons that we've done as well as other lessons that counselors may have that address that exact need. If it was only a couple, that's usually just somebody in the building connecting with it. But if there was a trend in your classroom, we wanted to address that in the morning meeting. So we took some time in the last age well.
It was the same for secondary as well. So, so I um, I sharing with our advisory team leads and with our counselors, the same, the same method of here's your own bill, filling individual information. You may want to look at a specific character strong lesson that might identify like a common theme, let's say anxiety and how do you build that into your middle school advisory? Or let's look at the bank of lessons that have been provided for our high schools and how do we integrate that into an advisory lesson as well. So I just wanted to share that if you have a great elementary perspective, I'd love to bring the secondary piece. That's all. Yeah.
I guess, I, I guess I'll clarify my question a little more. Uh, at some point, we generalized that our students were terrified about coming back, because they hadn't been in person a long time. And yet eighty-two percent of them said, we don't need it.
Yeah.
How does, how does, how does that, how, if the general feeling is people were terrified about coming back, why do we think eighty-two percent said, oh, I don't need it?
Michelle, let's have the answer. I feel like she has her hand up and then we can.
As a student who's terrified to go back, but answered, I don't need anything, I think it's just as like, it's like, we're nervous, but like, it's not, we're not so nervous or you can't do anything that's close. It's like one of those things where it's like, we are anxious, we're recognizing that anxiety, but it's also like, we'll get through it, kind of thing. Like it's not nothing. Because sometimes like when we see these nervousnesses and then it says like, immediate resources of access, I'm like, well, it's not really an emergency. And then like for like monitor back question, like, and then like for, I don't want to like check back in quarter one, because I'm pretty sure by quarter one, I'll probably get figured out. I think a lot of kids have this mindset of like, stick it through. Whether it's probably why most of them, because like we try not to bother people. So we just like, like no, no concern and then, you know, we're anxious.
It looks like Seth has their hand up. Do you want to add something, add something? Seth, thank you for joining us.
Yeah. Hi, I'm sorry it took me forever to get here. We had some rehearsals that were happening, but I'm here now. Um, I was just going to add to what Michelle was saying. Um, I also think that there might just be an element from a student's side of like, some of that anxiety is just going to happen and it's not really something that's like addressed, like it's, I, I feel like for some students, it might end up being a more sort of generalized anxiety of like, do I remember how to do things? Do I know what to, like, um, but you might not know what to ask for help with. Like you might just be anxious and not be thinking like, um, I'm trying to think of a good example off the top of my head and it's not coming to me, but like, if I think of like, is there anything that a teacher can do to help me? I'd want to come to them with like a problem where I'd be like, yeah, I'm worried about finding my classes. Can I get help around or a map versus that kind of like general anxiety of like, this is a new situation? But there might not necessarily always be stuff for students to ask for, especially in this like giant change. I think that in my experience, it's less, especially at an older grade, I don't know about um, elementary school or middle school, but like as a high schooler, it feels to me like there's less that needs to be, or it feels like to me like the anxiety is more just like the new situation unless anything that a teacher could specifically help with, because it's just kind of a broad thing and not like a, an anxiety, but a specific problem.
Thank you for any perspective.
Can I also share that I think that that welcome back connection conference is the start of the journey and the, the start of that connection? And I think giving all educators or guiding questions is just starting to facilitate that conversation is just the beginning, right? So for our advisory teachers to be that person that's saying, how are you feeling? That I sure hope is not the first time or the only time that they're going to continue to ask that. So over the span of the year, I think it, it creates that foundation, but then to continue to build upon that dialogue conversation is building that community and those relationships with students. So we may see, if you did the survey again, a different pie chart trend because of the strengthening relationship that was from September seventh and eighth. So maybe a mid-year point in time. So I would, I would predict that we may see a somewhat of a shift in those percentages too.
Anybody else checking online? All right. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Frances, the continues, like it feels like all of our presentations tonight are clearly like this.
Yes.
There's uh, we're all, they're all basically talking about the same thing. So uh, you're up with yes.
And just a little bit more, a little different with that.
Right.
Um, so just here to give an update on equity access engagement for quarter one. Um, and I put this quote up here because it really, it spoke to me and, and the work that we've been doing and I'm, I am going to read this one. We all create our own version of the world that has distortions. Everyone has some form of implicit bias, some distortion of the world that's based on how and where they grew up. And this is from Bruce Perry and Oprah Winfrey's book, um, What Happened To Me? And I think as we focus ourselves on this year, it's, it's, it's about being okay with the fact that we're going to make mistakes. But mistakes don't mean we stop doing what we need to do. It, it mistakes don't mean that we don't continue to engage in the conversation and continue to have the discourse. And so if you go to the next slide, um, this is just our agenda today. I'm going to go over our phase two, if you remember last year, you had phase one. How we're incorporating culturally responsive education with our equity framework. A real brief talking about foundations, connections and support, which was our pillars for equity and HSD that we um, rolled out uh, last year, and then how we are elevating the voices of all through action. And I would be remiss if I didn't stop and take a step back and say, I think sometimes in the skin that I'm in, I know the present and I really try hard to be present. And I'm always thinking about what could, what's the next strategic step we need to make forward? But I don't want to do that and not honor our past and how much work we've got over the years. Since I've been in the district and before with the work that we've done with um, equity and really helping people to focus on all students. And all means all. It's, it's, it's our kids of color, it's our white kids, it's our kids of privilege, it's our underserved and marginalized students. It's our kids with high abilities that are antagonists, our kids that are students who have learning, um, different learning abilities. And so we go over these norms um, at the start and they're from Len Singleton and courageous conversations at the start of every meeting. Next slide. And so this month, when, this is what everybody's really focusing on, it's just a review of that foundation of our phase two focusing on our stakeholders and our students, staff and families. This week, yesterday, we were able to have an equity leadership team meeting, which was the first one we've had this year. Many of you may remember that last year, we started our HSD equity leadership team, which includes classified, certified um, secondary, elementary administration, a mixture of folks that are in district offices and out in buildings. And um, well, our first meeting was yesterday and it went wonderfully, um, with some good discussions on how are we changing the narrative for our students? How are we enriching the experience of our students in HSD through our interactions, through our lessons, through our instruction, through our relationships? What is it that we're doing with our students, staff and families to enrich um, the livelihood of our, of our families and our community? And so what they'll be doing this year is really digging into culturally responsive education and how Zaretta Hammond's work has um, talks about the three distinctions of equity. That when we talk about equity, it is not just multicultural, multiculturalism. It's also multiculturalism, social justice or social harmony and the, the culturally responsive um, heterogamy that we teach in our classroom. And that includes having high cognitive rigor for our students. It's not watering down, which can happen sometimes when we're talking about second language learners or when we're talking about students who may identify with a learning disability. Oftentimes, there's that notion that we'll water it down. It's not about that. When you're doing true culturally responsive education, you still hold the high standards, but you tailor how they're going to get access and be able to explain their thinking. And that may not come with the traditional scantron test that, that, yeah, believe it or not, this is what we have. Hopefully not in our school, but my kid brought one home and I was like, ooh, really? Um, and, and through their interactive notebooks and through, one of the teachers was telling me, she had asked all the kids, do videos for themselves and they sent them from their phone. What a wonderful way for a kid to explain how, how they are learning and how they are having high cognitive rigor and being able to explain their learnings. That's culturally responsive education. And so in our professional development or, or personal professional learning that we're providing, um, it was just released today to our administrators, we'll walk through the process with them. And then we'll be delivering that professional development sometime between now and the end of quarter one. They're going to ask questions like, what do they need to be successful? What do we need to do in order to change our student's experience? And if you notice in the right bottom hand side is um, foundations, connections and support, which is the pillar of what we've been working on. If we have foundation, if we built up the foundation, if we're making the connection and we're providing the support, then that window, window that we were talking about is going to spin and it's going to spin effectively and, and really energize the system and the student that we're talking about. So some things that we're doing this year, we released our quarter one PD for school-based sites. And this year, what's a little bit different is we're differentiating, differentiating for our departments. So we have a liposys who are um, working on the differentiated PD for departments. Because one thing, we met with every department and we've met with thirty-two of the thirty-six schools. We've got three more tomorrow, so I'm a little bit closer. But what we're doing in these one-on-one connections with the administrators and the department heads is really looking at what's your goal? And the one thing that I heard from departments is what we did last year was great for foundation, but we need something tailored for our department. We're in transportation or we're in facilities or the public that I'm working with are um, you know, nutrition services and they only work this short and that time. So we've taken that advice and we're doing different ways to provide that PBD. It may be a secret, it may be through video, it may be something that comes at the end of, um, at the end of the day for an extended contract. And so with all of the goals that are set, we have actionable steps for each one of them. And like I said, then I have a couple of partners that are going out and meeting so that um, we can be hands-on and I'm in the field with them. For connections, we're training school-based departments and teams. This can um, with the equity leadership team that we had last, yesterday, that's just a hodgepodge of us, uh, sprinkling of all of our um, school district. But we also have equity-based school team leaders. And so um, coming in November, they'll be doing some training on how to build capacity within their building through um, discourse. And so our hope is this, we've got to train the people who are leading it, but we also need to get into the field to train our teachers who are the ones who are in front of our students. We've continued with our family engagement with um, our targeted groups, our packs. And this year, um, we have Alma Hernandez, who is working as our TOSE to build partnerships and mentorships for affinity groups. So her in partnership with another TOSE, Jessica Harden, Mokado are working with, we've just had the survey out a week ago, but we're aligning of who's the BS, who's the person that you're building for BSU? Who's the person for your Asian group, Asians, whatever. And what we'll be able to do is then send one of us out there to work with the city, the student affinity groups, so that we can hear what they're saying. And this may also apply to student leadership groups. So all that data is being collected so that we can be targeted and intentional and going out and being a part of our student groups so that we can hear and elevate the voices of our students that, and of our families. Um, each one of the TOSEs that work with me is assigned to a family engagement group. So as you saw today, it's Alicia, it's Alicia, attends the Black Village family. And then um, we have Jessica Harden, Mokado, and Alice Taylor, who attend either the Latinx Fed or the Latinx IAC and the Asians. So we're trying to spare ourselves out so that we can be a voice to hear in addition to everything that our building principals do, in addition to what our staff give us in surveys and in feedback. It's just an extra layer to provide um, the feedback that we need to move forward. And then supports, um, we provide research, providing research for stakeholders, um, the training that we're doing in partnership with our instructional leaders in OSP. And we have a group that are doing restorative practices and responsive, um, restorative justice and responsive practices. And our middle school and high schools identified a um, building leader that's actually, a couple of them per building that are teachers in the building that are um, that were trained last summer. And they're bringing the work forward through their departments. And we have a plan to how we will move to the next level with bringing in more people to get trained. Um, and so that's some of the stuff we're doing with support. Last slide, I think. And so how are we elevating the voices of law through action? It's again, going back to students, staff and our family community. With our students, our leadership teams, our affinity groups, our organized and targeted groups that we're calling to the table so we can hear their voice. We love, and I love the words that we say in HSD, that we know kids by name, strength and need. And that is a beautiful, wonderful starting point. But it's name, strength and need and action. So when we ask our families to give us opinions, when we ask them, when we call them to the table, our students, when we ask for people's opinion, it's what are we doing with that information that is right to us to take action upon? When we're talking about staff, it's connecting with the schools, the departments, the affinity groups, the district level groups. And with our family and communities, the packs, the family engagement and the partnerships. And so even so much as one, one of the things that Alma is doing is she's working with our after-school programs in our elementary. And it's about connecting with those partners to make sure that they're on the same page with us, because they're meeting our families. Of some of our most marginalized could be said, and some of, in some instances, not at all. Um, and how can we utilize that time with them to provide professional um, learning for them? Like Google 101 in the last half hour before you pick up your child, or did you know this? And so you'd have that, like that window. We've got to get things settled with our partners first, but it's about creating those partnerships and like they said before, Cairo tools. The question that we're asking ourselves when we leave buildings or we leave professional development or I'm asking myself is how will this discussion, interaction, professional development workshop, how will this enrich our whole world's students' experience? And if, if we don't have an answer at the end of it, then we need to check back on what our purpose was for walking into that conversation, that discussion, that interaction. And if if we don't have an answer at the end of it, then we need to check back on what our purpose was for walking into that conversation, that discussion, that interaction. Because our our goal should be that whole child and that child should feel cured, that child that feels elevated, that child that feel that their voice makes a difference in the world that will try to help them create. I think that's my last one. Kelly, is it? Okay, I get to sit down. You have any questions? I'm smiling behind the mask because I get to sit down.
Can't see the online folks anymore, but do we have any hand raised online, George? Continue it.
I just, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, Fran, for your presentation. And I love just the depth of the the planning and the program that you set up. And I also just appreciate the the last kind of reflection question. I think that kind of ties to what we heard from our Black Village today about how do we define success? And I think for us, a big cornerstone is centering around the the whole child and experience. And I'm really just happy and excited for this work to continue. So I just wanted to give kudos to you.
It's a whole team. It's all of us. All of us are a part of the team.
Yeah, I also appreciate that last question. Right, that that's great that we ask ourselves that. All right, next up, Jordan, you're finally getting kind of that.
I just wanted to update on the student devices and the one to one deployment and to go along with this, you know, it's access for all. And that's what we wanted to achieve through this. And we even we had started down this path prior to pandemic and it made this decision to go one to one at most of our grade levels and have expanded that. So if you remember our original device plan that we established in twenty nineteen was that we were going to go grades K two at a two to one device distribution. In the classroom, grades three through six, one to one. And that was planned to happen the summer of twenty twenty two. And then in secondary, all grades were going to be one to one. And that was planned to happen in the summer of twenty twenty. We also looked at adding additional supports, teacher and curriculum support, digital curriculum, training. And then at that time, also adding middle school and elementary school techs. We only had techs that did actual support at the sites at the high school. So if you're looking to distribute more devices and use and get more use out of the digital curriculum, we wanted to support those. Of course, many things changed after that. So our secondary Chromebooks, we did fund those with the bond. They were late getting here. Again, we originally planned to have them that start of the twenty twenty school year. Of course, there was lots of delays and shipping issues and factory issues. And so those weren't delivered until February of twenty twenty one. And so we did distribute some at the middle schools and high schools over that time to replace devices that students were having trouble with. But we didn't do a full distribution from the start of this fall. And so schools gave those out, those are Lenovo five hundred E Chromebook that flips over, is touchscreen and has a pen compared to our more basic models that we had before that were just pretty much at the very base level Chromebook. So these are about the highest end of the Chromebook line for student devices. And gives a lot more options to what students can do on them and they are much faster than previous. And also much more weathered. They've learned a lot as they've done that. The elementary ones on the next slide. We actually ended up using because we wanted to expand our Chromebook distribution and accelerate it and move it up a year. Because originally it was for that summer of twenty twenty two. We ended up having those delivered in the July, August timeframe of twenty twenty one and we used Acer funds to fund that additional device purchase because we expanded grades K through two to be one to one also. Coming out of students being at home and being online and doing all of those things, we were going to need all students to be able to have a device as we continued into this school year. And have options with that, you know, going to everyone. So we did expand that one to one and accelerated that purchase and were able to get them in. We switched to an Acer Spin five eleven, which is really the same style of device, still a flip over touchscreen Chromebook with a stylus. The difference was we, Lenovo wasn't going to be able to deliver again for the start of the school year. So we switched to this and inserted guarantees. They thought they could get them here and they did deliver on that. So the elementaries have been giving them out and giving them, giving those to all. The other big piece of that was the support. You'll see the picture there down on our four tech toses that are working with Alano on all our digital curriculum, both that we purchased and acquired over the last couple of years along both prior to pandemic and during. Many of those things we see continuing forward as we move forward with our use of digital curriculum. This helps us support schools both as we try to expand and and train teachers on the use, good use of those tools and the curriculum and trying to focus on a higher level thinking skills and creation of materials, not just consumption with the devices. And so the addition of those tech toses is key to that. And then we also did get the addition of those middle school texts and elementary school texts this year. And so those at the middle school, they cover two schools. So they're split half time, one in each middle school. And then at the elementary, they cover two to three schools and rotate a different schools support. This is helping us a ton in the current situation, both having the devices and that curriculum support and digital tool support. As we help students as they transition back and forth into the classroom, sometimes during quarantine or others. And as teacher continues, teachers continue to use and expand their use of these digital tools in that classroom. We are still providing hotspots to families. And expanding the use of the Comcast Internet Essentials, the district continues to pay for that for families. If families sign up for that and are approved or they're using some of our hotspots. And today we actually found out we got approved for from the Federal Emergency Connectivity Fund, the the fills of all those Verizon hotspots and that Comcast connection. So we just got that notice today. So.
You're exciting.
You can go to the next one. Another one of this, this was a some questions around filtering and how do we manage those students' accounts on devices that come up over time? I think we had just a portion of this on our board retreat earlier this year. And so I went ahead and attached it here. So I'll go through a couple of those things. So on the HSD Chromebooks, they only allow an HSD account to log into them. The reason for that is all of the Google and Chromebook security is based on the user account. So we have, if the filtering and security services are going to be enforced on the device, we have to only allow them to log in with an HSD account to them. And then it knows who they are, whether they're staff or student and what grade level. And that's important to go to the next one because that triggers the website filtering. We got a new filter this last year as we deployed for the start of last school year. That is called light speed relay. And the filters figure based on that grade level. So an elementary student gets a more stringent filter than a middle school student and a middle school student gets a more stringent filter than a high school student and and so forth. So it's done by categorizing websites and then they choose which categories. Now this new filter is much more granular in that the old filter you could block, you could choose to block games or leave it open. In the new system, we can choose to block games that are general games or educational games or mature games. And so it's much more granular in us selecting what gets blocked or what doesn't. And we can also choose by grade level and we can also choose by time of day if we want to do that as well. Some things available after school, but they wouldn't be available during the school day. So it just gives us lots of options there. The other piece of the filter that we'll be releasing this year, we haven't yet, we're still in the process of getting that set up is some teacher tools that go along with the the software that allows teachers to push things to the Chromebooks to the students in that classroom, focus their attention if they need to sort of say, okay, everybody, you know, eyes to front or you know, present something, they can share screen and use some of those pieces and manage the Chromebooks of the students in the classroom during the time that they're we hope they have that released here in November and get teachers trained with that. You can go ahead. And then one of the final pieces is the Google settings. So we do enforce what's called safe search when students are searching. Google chat is one of the things that's differential at the different levels. We try to have that off at the elementary and middle school, but we allow high school students to use the chat feature. And then YouTube, we use what's called restricted mode. And what that does is uses sort of a YouTube based filtering system to try to restrict which videos are available inside the system. But all teachers, all staff members have the ability to unblock or block different videos. So if a teacher's trying to use something in a class and the students are in trouble getting to it, the teacher themselves can actually unblock it immediately. And so those are some of the pieces of that. And then the final piece is just, we get sometimes questions from parents and guardians about about the devices that we do have sites set up that we created over the last couple of years. They are in English and Spanish, so I would recommend you go and take a look at those. Those links should be live in your documents. And it gives some full explanation of how the Chromebooks work, filtering, guides, videos and different things. Then it also just has some at home suggestions for parents such as, especially at the lower levels, we get sometimes complaints or why can my student get on and use the device late at night and those types of things. So the suggestion on something like that is, you know, have a place in your home that gets charged each night and you know where that is, which may not be the student's bedroom. And so have that place that you know the Chromebook gets placed there and plug in each night and and do those types of things. So it has some of those suggestions and then just a lot of information that I explained.
Is there someone that, so like looking at my Spanish speaker here and going to the website and I still like, like having heads or tails of the stuff that's on there. Is there someone that is dying to call to support me and kind of walk me through this in Spanish?
Yes. So we do have our family line. Through the pandemic, we were actually stepping that through the day and the night. We have both English and Spanish speakers available for that each day and night. Right now, we don't have that. We still have it available, but it's more of a leave a message and then we call the parent back. And there's still that English, Spanish version there. And of our texts that we hired this last year, we required half of those texts are all bilingual. And so we've been doing that and all those are deployed at the rural language schools and and both of our middle school texts are bilingual. And so that's going to reach out to continue to support those functions and supporting students at the school.
Looks like Monique has a question online.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions actually. So the, so this program with the devices. Is this a long term thing or is this just for COVID? Or how is that?
The light speed relay, the filtering program and the classroom component of it are long term. And so we do plan on continuing to use that. It is we do need to provide filtering on those devices for students and feel that that is needed both on campus and off campus as they're taking those home. And then the classroom component. So when we when we purchased it last year, we purchased it as a five year contract. We purchased the devices.
And Monique, more generally, since twenty nineteen after the bond, we have been moving towards a one to one distribution of Chromebooks throughout the two months.
Okay, yep, that's what I was really interested in is is these devices are a fixture, a long term, a long term thing. My my other question is then with that being the case, what happens with devices that are are broken or lost in outdated tech? How how often are these being replaced and how is that being funded?
So the current devices were funded with both bond and Acer funds. We have enough bond reserved, put back that we both set aside and were saved from other projects coming in under budget. And that we should have enough there to do one more replacement cycle of these current devices with our current bond funds. And so that would be in starting really in the twenty twenty five, twenty four, twenty five school year. Over the sort of three year period, we would be able to replace all of the current devices. And that would get us into either looking at other ways to support them or into the next sort of bond cycle. So there's a couple of options there, but we've at least reserved enough to do another cycle out of this. And we did also purchase as far as on the breakage side of things. Part of this purchase included, because you know, upkeeping them is quite a bit. They are way more rugged than previous models. But we did purchase a repair contract on them. And so we have a service that picks up any damaged devices at the schools on a weekly basis. Takes them, repairs them and returns them to the school after they've been repaired. Depending on what that is, there is, right now we have those on a three year term. And so the elementary devices do have accidental damage protection on them. Anything else that's out of warranty, we would cover the cost as long as it makes sense to do that. So we're tracking those costs and covering those out of our current tech budget.
And one of the things we discussed previously was the idea that a three year old Chromebook doesn't have a ton of value. So giving a graduating senior the opportunity to purchase it for some nominal fee and keep it was something we we had planned to do.
Okay. And then one more question, hopefully on the, as far as the filtering goes. So I noticed on there that social media was not blocked for high school. And then categories like mature art, mature body art and mature language. And I was wondering if you could speak to that?
Yeah, so unfortunately, the naming of that, I think, is somewhat unfortunate, but those are the actual categories. So mature just means that's the way to put this. It's not porn. It's for an older audience. And so we feel like at the high school level, students are at that level. And we have the ability to turn those on and off and monitor those. But that's what that mature category is. And so that's why we do have it locked at the middle school and elementary level. But relying on our high school maturity level that that is appropriate for them.
Okay, in the social media aspect?
Yeah, it's sort of the same piece there. You know, we, there's a, you know, definitely a decision point there. It's definitely allowed. It becomes a piece if you want students to use this as their device all the time and And for both schoolwork and for social interaction and those type of things that this allows them to do at the high school level. And so that is open. And again, with their mature level, they have the choice to make use of that. And so the device sort of is theirs to use. Of course, families have to make some of those choices and decide whether they want students to have access to those type of things, whether it's on that device or on their phone or other mean. But that's definitely something that's a, you know, an area that we're allowed to make that choice or not. There's no restrictions, you know, federally or by law that wouldn't allow that to happen. And that's sort of where most of the high school things are guided or, you know, we block the things we're required to, but try not to get too far beyond into anything else.
I'd also like to say, Monique, as a parent of a now sixteen-year-old, he's now in his sophomore year. Since junior high, he has had a Chromebook. Not him or any of his friends would ever admit to using that Chromebook for anything other than school because they don't like it for anything. It has very little real life utility for them outside of tracking their grades, outside of actually doing any assignment. If I asked my son to pick up his Chromebook, he would ask me why. It remains in his laptop. It doesn't come out into school. And then when he comes out from school, it goes back in the laptop. I'm saying that just to give you an idea of the real life, on-the-ground parent-child use of this Chromebook, they will not use it for social media because they hate it. So I hope that helps to give you a little bit of context from a parent of a sixteen-year-old.
I would say that that would be different for people that have other options, right? Because we have some kids where this is the only device that they have there. So I think there, I think it's depending on the home situation.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, definitely. If you have another option, sure, yeah. She is?
Yeah, I just want to know Michelle's excitement because I think that, I mean, when COVID started, we were talking about the digital device, you know, back then, where we are now, where we can have connectivity with every single student in a one-to-one ratio is just phenomenal. So just huge kudos to you, Jordan, and your team and, you know, for really prioritizing this and making this, making this possible and accessible for all of our students. So just thank you.
Steph, looks like you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just also going to throw in really quick as to Monique's question. Like I know that like the Glencoe High School like Spirit page and other things have an Instagram account. I know that my brother's soccer team posts photos of their matches on Twitter. To a certain extent, social media is the way we interact with the world. So it makes, even for many school options, I know that's how people get their information by following like the school Instagram account. So I think it makes sense to not deny people that opportunity by like blocking social media on the Chromebooks. Like you want to check what the next spirit day is? Cool, let you go on, you should be able to go on Instagram to like check out the Glencoe High School like Spirit page. And I also know that there's some things that come across in high school where like, especially in my experience in like literature and theater classes, where I've had to look up like stuff that, I'm trying to think of an example, like I've had to look up stuff of like how to tie a tie on different websites that might otherwise be like not for an audience of like middle schoolers, just because of like, that's what the high school experience is. You get more experience with more like adult topics because it's on the stepping stone to adulthood. And that's what like the actual day ends up looking like. Just to answer your question as to why we'd have those unblocked from a student perspective.
So.
And then Steph, after that, like for me, like I need Facebook to log into a lot of websites. And if that was blocked, I can't access those websites. And also I can't erase the history. So even if I wanted to like do this, sometimes like I'm on YouTube and I want to listen to some songs, but I feel really self-conscious because I can't erase a phrase like history. So like I can't speak already, be out of the world. And then also like, I think that's just like building a form of trust because like when we show these high schoolers that we trust them, like of course, some of them are going to do not really wise things. So like we do need to trust them and let, like have them have like control over their own learning. So and then also I want to add one, the Chromebooks are really nice. Like when I first got mine, like he wants to go, I was like, well, like I wasn't expecting his time because I was testing as well. That was like a nice surprise. Kaylee, I'm right here. Pretty nice. Yeah. And then, oh, so I had a question for like the websites. Bitleys are like blocked. So a lot of like websites we can't access because of all three bitleys. So like how do we unblock certain websites?
Yeah, the teacher, any teacher can request and there, well, there's a couple of ways. One on the, on the that parent-student site, there is a link on there to go, you can check why, how the filter is categorizing a specific website. And you can request if you think it's being categorized wrong, you can actually submit, anyone can submit a request to have it re-categorized, which could then open it if they put in the appropriate category. The other is, you know, teachers or any staff member can submit a ticket and we can look at that site and open specific things. We try not to do too much specific actual URL changes because it, kids, students go to just over a million sites a day on the Chromebooks. And so that, you know, doing a URL at a time isn't really possible. The URL shorteners are an issue all the time because the way some of them work, it's a little, little technical for some others will understand that they act as basically a proxy. And so the system thinks you're going somewhere else, but really the URL shortener is sending you to a different site. And so that's why they get sometimes caught up in the system because it's actually, it detects that it's not going where it actually says it's going. And so, which is a security problem. But if there are specific sites, those can be like a teacher could be plus points if you couldn't.
And something like Philly is going to be reflecting a longer string. It's just a shortener, like, so I mean, as long as you can find the original string, you can figure out that's blocked. Kaylee, welcome.
Hi, where are you?
Oh.
With so many kids using them and then being able to access like email and stuff, what about like, like scams through the email, bogus ones that want to like, is there a way that they can get into like HSM systems through HSM? Or is that all like by law protected and all that?
Yeah, so the student email is really just like a staff email, but we use the same system. So those are all in the Microsoft system. So we do have quite a few different security pieces built on top of that that affect both staff and students. There's really no difference there as far as the security. There's some Microsoft pieces like what's called advanced threat protection and different things that scans links and there's all those that are, it's called on for staff.
So I have two comments and one question. First comment is they are really nice and they are really easy to use when it comes to math because I know my younger student in elementary school, she would always like want to borrow it because they're always, or they always didn't work on Word doc. So it was very hard for them to be able to write on the Word doc with the older Chromebook. So they are really nice. And then Monique's question about social media, a lot of times nowadays, we use social media in class. Like I know in my E L A classes, we always look at social media posts and just connect it to some different things. And even in my history classes, we look at social media posts. So I think it's really nice that that isn't blocked because then, you know, some students may not have that on their phone or may not even have a phone. So I really like that. Those are my two comments. And my one question is now that, you know, Chromebooks are pretty much the new notebook, sometimes, and I have done this, we forget our Chromebook at home. And so because it's really weird now because some classes, you need a Chromebook, some classes you don't need a Chromebook. So sometimes with like the A C one-two schedule, it's kind of confusing like what day it is. Sometimes I forget too. So do teachers have like a spare Chromebook just in case a student forgets their Chromebook? And they really need it for that class period? And a Chromebook that they can use just for that class and just for that period?
Each teacher doesn't necessarily have extra Chromebook or Chromebooks. Every school does have the extra Chromebooks to allow for some short-term checkouts or swaps. So if one would be broken, we don't expect you're going to wait until it gets repaired to get a new one. And so we did supply every school with the, their total enrollment plus extra devices so that those swaps can be made quickly. And so there should be some way to check those out at the school. And so that, so we can talk to school about making sure that that's more clear, like if somebody needs a device, where do they go to get that data basically?
All right. Anywhere questions from our online participants? Looks like Monique led the follow-up.
No follow-up. I just wanted to say thank you to Jordan for the responses.
All right, yeah, thanks for, thanks for finally getting this in. And I had a few questions, but everybody else asked them, so we're all good. All right. Brooke Dilber did not get very far from the last presentation ended. So we have a career and college pathways update with Dale, Travis. I guess you're going to probably hand it off and who's up first? And it just, this feels like it dovetails very nicely with our social learning conversation. Little bit of a theme, right? Little bit of a theme.
Awesome. Well, tonight we are going to talk about college and career pathways. And I just feel really proud to be able to work with the dynamic duo of Travis and Brooke, who's been leading this work for over seven years. And just a huge shout out to their leadership as well as our community partners and support from the school board related to our college and career pathway work. So our objective tonight, we really want to dive into kind of a little history lesson and also talk about our current work, specifically looking at this year. And then also talk a little bit about where we hope to go and what we're thinking in order to help meet our long-term goal of having students all graduate college and career ready, career and college ready. And really our college pathways is focused around if we connect within our community and we create these viable pathways, then our students will not only graduate, which I know as a board you have definitely been a support for graduation, but in addition to making sure our students can go out into the world, be career-ready, be college-ready, and hopefully come back and enrich our amazing world for our community over time. So sometimes people say, where does this come from? And it is a simple gold pattern that includes, includes things such as our local economic growth. You're going to hear tonight about some of the work we do within our community, looking at high wage, high demand jobs and our community partners. It is the ever-evolving, flowing, changing landscape. And we want to make sure our students are prepared for what they're headed into, not what it looked like seven years ago. We also want to hear from our students. So we do our needs assessment every other year, but we also are talking with our students. We're doing surveys with our students. And as we do this extra quantum profile, we also get to hear about what they're interested in and we get to see what they signed up for. That's definitely something that helps us understand on a district level, but also on a school level, what our students are interested in. And then finally, the ongoing body of research around C T E, the graduation rates and success rates of kids that participate or students that participate. And really looking at our programs, getting feedback from our students, watching them after they leave our system and hearing about their successes. So it keeps moving, so a little evolution.
So seven years ago, Superintendent Scott got us together in this room where's the mayor of Hillsborough, the president of the chamber, folks from Portland State University and P C C, other partners. And we asked what would it look like if all students graduated in our community and what happened if we unlocked all the talent and it was a benefit to our diverse industry that we have in Hillsborough? And we decided that we would create guaranteed and clear and viable pathways for all students in Hillsborough. And then we put together a structure where we have leaders from all those different organizations and industry and that we would share responsibility for defining the needs of the community relative to our purpose, to strategize and execute the activities in Hillsborough career and college pathways work. We intentionally put career in front of college because not all careers require a college upfront. To go into a career during high school and after high school and add college degrees just to stack pieces to your educational career. So this is a photo from Jackson Bottom Wetlands, from Glenn Viola Walters Cultural Arts Center and from the boardroom downstairs of our steering committee, which has met for years. And I just want to emphasize the point, if you take nothing else away tonight, that students, industry partners, higher ed partners, those were schools foundation, teachers, parents, they've all been along on this journey with us and have defined how we've created our career and college pathways in Hillsborough. So here's some of the things that are possible now and later because of the community and the culture that we've built around this work. So there have been three phases to the work. And the first was to establish experiences for students. And at the beginning, we've created internships, dual credit opportunities and career-related learning opportunities. We monitor them with like thermometers. If we could get to a thousand internships, what would that look like? Do you want to contribute to us achieving that goal? We tried to create fear of missing out in the community around this work in a positive and healthy way. The second phase was communication and we developed branding and one-pagers to represent the C T E programs that existed in our schools and to communicate with partners to get them engaged and families so they could access those pathways. And now we're in the integration phase where we're focusing on K-12, career and college pathways with elementary integration with our wonders of Montevideo, so the arts adoption, career action labs at middle schools, et cetera, social, emotional learning and identity We developed the pathways that we have right now based on three different lenses. We did an analysis of talent gap in our area from different sectors like healthcare, teachers, advanced manufacturing. And we said, if we don't educate students into career fields like this, we're going to have a huge gap in workforce. So why don't we create opportunities? The second lens was balance. We looked at career learning areas and actually when we had a visit this summer from the Department of Education from Washington, D.C., accidentally the C T E director at the Department of Ed was on the walk with us and noticed our bilingual career learning areas poster. She's bilingual and she said, wait, we're in an elementary school, aren't we? Why are you teaching C T E pathways bilingually? Let's be friends. Brooke and I tried to follow-up conversation with their office to learn what we're doing in Hillsborough, for example. We look at demographic representation. We want each program to be demographically representative of the students that we serve. And then we look at surveys and enrollment data, we look at student interest. So if students are interested in bioscience, we should be creating bioscience programs that happens to intersect with talent gap in our area. One of the secrets to success with collective impact work is to have shared metrics. So with our industry partners, our higher ed partners, our schools foundation, ourselves, we look at these different indicators of what does success look like? We have added to the enrollment in higher education apprenticeship or trades after high school as a metric that we look at. We track scholarship money awarded. We're going to add a three-year snapshot of students who enroll in Oregon Promise so that we can see who's taking advantage of the economic benefits that are available to our graduates and monitor who enrolls and takes next steps in their education. It used to be who went to college or who didn't, and it's become much more nuanced than that. Measure ninety-eight, commonly known now as high school success, has these three goals and you'll notice them, that they overlap with our. has these three goals and you'll notice them, that they overlap with our continuous improvement plan. So we've been preaching the Rainbow 12 goals and emphasizing that every penny that we spend and everything that we're invested in goes toward achieving these goals. So we want to increase by 10% the number of traditionally underrepresented students in college-level coursework, AP, IB, or dual-credit or CTE programs. We want to increase the number of students who are on track in ninth grade to 95%. And we want to increase the number of traditionally underrepresented students in well-rounded learning opportunities, including CTE by 10%. So these are, show up for our grant for Measure 98, but also for our continuous improvement plan as a district. You know, this work starts in pre-grade, kindergarten, not just in late grade. Right now, we have four working groups. So if you're interested in signing up for the uh Steering Committee for CCP, you could be involved in the group that works on dual credit, communication and stakeholder engagement, career learning areas, and strengthening our industry partnerships, and then family engagement with this work. Brooke Dilma, has more?
Thank you. So what I love about the slogan that we have created under Career and College Pathways of more career-ready, more current community-connected, and more internships, that is a marker of our growth from seven years ago, but our continual focus on those three action items. So I love that this is how we also have based this upon are the indicators that you just saw. So we can celebrate and recognize where we were and where we are and then where we're headed. So I just wanted to anchor to um that focus as I then transition us to the work that we're currently doing and then the work ahead. In school-based opportunities, we have the umbrella of Career and College Pathways and we have 34 recognized career technical education programs. I'm hoping students that you see these one-pagers, yay, okay! In your guidance practice, because as Travis was sharing, in those three phases of work, this is an anchoring communication tool for all of our stakeholders. And these continue to be revised, we continue to look for feedback, and we continue to look at the career possibilities within our community and how do we share in real time those potential local employers and those potential possibilities for our students. So I'm glad that you're seeing those and we continue to use these and revise these as one of those key communication tools, not only to share those 60-plus career and college pathways, but also with anchor to those 34 career tech ed programs. Something else to note is work-based learning more and more is becoming a focus, not only within our community. I'm going to talk about the vast amount of internships that are, we produced this summer, but also what does that look like for our state? So I wanted to anchor to, as we talk and engage with our community partners, it's also looking at opportunities for students in that more internship category, but looking at work-based learning and what that means for our students. Um, over time too, that focus of pre-apprenticeship, what does that look like for students to start to see that career ladder? What does apprenticeship mean? How do we pull in opportunities locally for our students to start learning about? And I always share, what we have within our classrooms is amazing. If you have gone after the bond work, thank you so much. The classroom experience is amazing, but what the community can unlock is a whole nother level of that classroom-to-community connection. And what I anchor to is this isn't a Hillsborough School District focus. This is our Hillsborough community focus. And it takes not only our classrooms, but it takes all of this within our community for our students to see themselves and who they are today and where they're going tomorrow. So that work-based learning is a huge component that we'll continue to focus on. We also have expanded our contract and hope for change our decision to Washington County Chamber, so I should change that rotation. We expanded our contract to also provide now middle school experiences. We're going to have a little bit of the Action Labs. So in that, students never stopped learning about what was in their community. But we did have to shift and we continue to have virtual experiences and guest speakers that are taking place within our school day. And we hope to get to the stage where students are having those work-based learning opportunities once again outside of our school buildings. But currently, we are still in partnership and the expansion of that work remains in with our Washington County Chamber, but still holding virtually. Also, we're growing partnerships. Um, if you are interested in learning more about internships or the framework that we have developed, a lot of our partners showed up for us this summer and were able to create those internships for our students. And so these are some of our key partners that we're working with when we're talking about that classroom-to-community connection. Also this summer, we engaged in something called Hillsborough Works. And this was an awesome partnership by the City of Hillsborough, our Chamber of Commerce, our community partner, and Hillsborough School District coming together in order to create over 350 summer internship experiences. And I want to note that the system that we have created, this is like when the rubber hits the road. This is when we go, over the seven-plus years that we have put these systems in action to be able to employ, over like three to four weeks, 350-plus students takes Conny Lou Williams in human resources. It takes Michelle Morris in figuring out how do we help to pay students, not only who are documented but undocumented, and allow an open opportunity for any student to be engaged in our community. It takes us, it takes our schools, and it takes our community partners who showed up. And our systems are in place in order to make something like that happen. Because it was crazy amazing. It was really difficult. And I just wanted to make a moment to recognize department leads in our, in our schools and our community for showing up in that way. Really good. If you want to know also more about internships, that's our website right there, specifically for students who are interested in internships, but those who want to continue to support our students. Um, but we also, I was actually just getting a text from my colleague, Adriana today. Um, we are still in need of hiring. And so some of the practices that we learned this summer, we are also still continuing on for not only adults, um, but also our students who have recently graduated. So she was just sharing the number of students that came in for support on hiring for some of our openings that we still have. So I think it's that continual learning and um system refinement that we can also put into action in other ways besides a student internship. Okay, middle school career action lab. I know that Audrey and Neville shared a little bit about action labs with you. Under the leadership of Audrey and Travis, it is amazing to see action labs in every middle school. And I do have to say, I was just marrying this slide with my teammates here. And um, luckily I have someone that I know who works at Evergreen Middle School and I could order him to go and take some pictures in real time of what action labs look like. So this is not a like staged picture and pictures I'm about to show. I love that students are diving into their own learning, they're collaborating, they are engaged in learning in a way that I think we all believe in and that we want to see. So I just want to take a moment to pause and acknowledge this. You'll see this, oh, look, Travis, look, we did it again, okay? The teacher who is a kind of bottom right-hand corner, this is their first time teaching this election. But that's what's beautiful about this, is that they can come right in and engage in student learning and learn with the students. Um, no matter if that is their training practice or not. And I love that they're able to navigate and just walk around the classroom, check in, but students are really leading their own learning, which is a huge component to setting up students for career college readiness after high school. So with all that, right, we talked about high school, we talked about middle school. And so now that focus of elementary integration, that was a little bit of a Travis was sharing, is that next wave of support. So with that, I'm going to transition to the slide back to Dale. And she's going to share a little bit about the work that we're doing, not only with our educators um in our own school district, but how we're also engaging with partnerships in Hillsborough Schools Foundation and that next stage and wave of support.
Excellent. So as we start, um, it went black on me, it doesn't like me.
Oh, no!
It likes you. I think it could show I won. How about forward?
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, there we go.
There we go.
Um, part of the reason that we partnered with Hillsborough Schools Foundation, we just wanted a big shout out for their investment and support of us bringing on, yeah, that's awesome, bringing on the Action Patterson Kits for those middle school action labs, is really because as we start having conversations with our students, a lot of times we would hear, man, I wish I knew about this in middle school. I didn't know that this was an opportunity in high school. So as students are forecasting, we thought, wouldn't it be awesome if they started to kind of get a taste of some of those things? And that's kind of where that came from, which is great. Um, and as we continue to look at some of the resources that are on our website, this is one, kind of the roadmap, we have acknowledged the fact that it is a long journey onto career and college. Um, and definitely our counselors support some of that work, but we know our kids need to see even more. Um, and we know that our kindergartners, um, all the way through 12th grade need to be exposed and encouraged in different career and college pathways. And so as we start thinking about um what we really want to focus on, we sort of see two sort of distinct areas, especially kind of in our elementary schools. One is really about knowledge of self, right? Your strengths, your passion, your identities, your interests. For a long time in our district, we've said, every student known by name, strength, and need? Absolutely. We also want every student to know themselves by name, strength, identity, and need, right? We want them to own their natural gifts, their natural ambitions, their natural passions, as well as acknowledging some of the things that maybe aren't of interest to them or don't come as naturally to them. Um, and then the second portion is really about career knowledge exploration and learning. And so we really want to maximize on some of the newest resources that we have. Specifically, we're thinking about starting with our Wonders Montevideo's curriculum for literacy and elementary. Um, it is rich with nonfiction. And so as students are learning about the forest, why not stop and say, boys and girls, did you know that there are people called forest strangers? And we have some that work right down the Highway 6 here and they're in the Tillamook Forest and they do these kinds of things. And let's listen to this three-minute video of somebody that's our neighbor. And it might look exactly like some of the students sitting in the classroom. Um, we are in a very rich, diverse community and we want to show our kids some of the exemplary role models that are in the community that maybe are not out there in a way that um they easily see them, but yet nonetheless, we know they exist. And we want every student to see themselves in all the potential career and college pathways. Um, so down at elementary, we're starting to have some one-pagers. And it's, it's, uh, you can dig into this on our website. But basically, it allows students to start acknowledging, if you like having hands-on, or you like working collaboratively, this is kind of a career that might be of interest to you. So um, letting kids start to explore and um benchmark off of the other one-pagers that we have in the high school that are related to the offerings.
And I want to, I, I love um the last two slides that Dale shared. This is really her, such a vision of Dale and such a passion of that K-12 experience. And really has needed a huge contribution and push to that elementary focus. I want to take a minute to acknowledge her leadership and support there. And also the icons that you see on those elementary one-pagers. When we talked about the social emotional learning castle framework, those are direct castle skills. And that's for the overlay of knowing self and that connection with career. That's that communication tool for elementary. So that they're learning about self, they're learning about SCL and how that connects to their next steps in career is really neat. And um, as we were presenting to Hillsborough Schools Foundation, they have such a passion and were such a support in that action lab that as we move forward into the elementary work, they were already there for us. They were showing up and saying, we get this, we know the vision, and we're ready to sponsor our girls' career kit. So I wanted to take a moment and thank them.
Okay. So uh, I just have a comment.
Sure.
The elementary play, that's like amazing because not only does it prepare like the little kids, but it also gives their parents of things like, things to come. So that's really as a parent, I'm like, oh, this is fantastic. This is like what awaits my child as they get older. And we can start talking about these different things now. So I, I love it.
Awesome. Yes, that's sort of the idea. I know as we have conversations um just in our own, own school district, many teachers aren't aware of all the opportunities that are out there for our students too. So that's another level of um acknowledgement, professional development, but it also helps them see those natural connections as they're teaching students. So these are some career kit launch boxes. Again, this is in collaboration with our Hillsborough Schools Foundation and they raised over a hundred thousand dollars to help support these. And basically, they are directly tied to the content that is in their Wonders Montevideo's curriculum. And there are books, trade books, that students can dive into. Um, and we've also had conversations about how we can also make some videos to support some of these explorations for elementary school, which are all on the horizon, we're just starting to dive into this.
Also, there is a um critical lens on each career kit that I wanted to share. We have our industry advisory committees that were formed to support our high school. Our business partners are providing feedback. Do we have the right equipment? And that's representing that not only that career, but that's age-appropriate. We have educators at each grade level going through the kits and providing feedback. Um, we have our district librarian. We, in this kit, we also used as a sample this summer, what does it look like in practice? And for our dual-language summer program, those educators were able to use the kit and say, here's what worked, here's what didn't, there's what to change. So with every kit, ensuring that we're hitting the mark. Because, you know, Hillsborough Schools Foundation really has a focus on, on building this investment. But we want to make sure that this investment shows up in our classrooms in the most appropriate way, not only for students to see themselves, but also that the educators feel like that's hitting the mark for them in their own instruction.
And I'm going to hand this to Brooke for the last two slides. But I do have to tell you, one of my big passions for starting to help us all have conversations about moving our career and college pathways into K-12 is some students don't have the opportunity from being a little person to hear people say, wow, I noticed that you really like doing hands-on tasks. Did you know that surgeons do that, that engineers do that? Um, that people that work in the forest work with their hands? And so we get the opportunity to not only help our kids learn content, but also help them learn about the global world and help them learn about all the possibilities. Um, there are predictable trajectories for some students. And Mike has always said, we want for all students what some students get. And this is an opportunity for us to help our students learn about themselves, but also learn about all the opportunities that are out there in the world. And it is going to be a big lift, but we're really excited about it. And um, we think that we have the right people in our system, in our community, students that are ready to dive in and make Hillsborough great, Oregon great, and world great and get out there and, and make a difference. So last slide for you.
Well, so hopefully your language is a celebration. You know where we were, you know where we are, and you know where we're headed. So in the next step of where we're headed, professional development, especially for elementary, is we're going to continue to introduce that wide variety of careers and also that partnership in direct connection with core content. We need to also make sure that we're setting up our educators for success. And we were able to have a new position, an elementary-focused career and college pathway integration specialist, named Amanda Bim. And she is starting that professional development series with our elementary educators on what that looks like within the classroom, being able to show up in elementary classroom to start to see what that would look like and how to support our K-6 students and educators in this, in this next wave of, of focus. Also, within the strategic plan development, as I was sharing, career and college pathways is not just Hillsborough School District. It truly is our Hillsborough community. And so when we think about the next wave of strategic planning, and you saw the, the pictures of over the last few years of incorporating voices within our community, our hope is that that shows up uh our hope is that that shows up also within our strategic plan and that that focus of career and college readiness, once again, is where we were and where we're headed. And then in community involvement, I think we continue to um get clear in our communication and ways that our can our community can not only provide feedback to us, but also how to support our students from that classroom to that work-based learning uh opportunity experiences for our students. And this one, I love, and then just uh lastly, Mike and I were talking about how at first the focus or the title of career and college pathways was a career and college pathway project. I think that there was maybe like, we thought maybe this would be like a three-year focus, but I think what we have learned over now this amount of time is that we're always going to be to be responsive to the growing trends within our community. And what Dale was sharing in that cycle, it's not ever going to end because we always need to be responsive to the careers that are coming to our community and those that we don't even know about. So when we're looking at data, when we're looking at student interest, it's always a continual responsive system that we're building. And that takes us to be responsive to our community and learning about the needs of those that we serve to continue to create programming experiences for our youth now and future generations. So I think that is all, and thank you for your time, and we'll take any questions as I pass out. Way.
Oh.
As it was thirty-four degrees this morning, every board member needs a fleece zip-up sweatshirt to represent CCP, so I'm going to pass those out as the inter team questions.
Questions or comments here online?
I have two comments. Um first comment is, I worked at the migrant summer school, and I remember re looking at the book, and I saw a college and career sticker on it, and I was like, college and career? Like, that's that's high school. And then I was helping, and then the more we got to work and the longer the time that I've been working, I realized that this is really great because the students really liked it. They really did. They always asked me questions. They were always going to talk about careers. We like read a lot of books on different themes, and students really liked it. So I just wanted to say that that was really nice. And another thing is that this year, I've really seen a lot more of the college and career center. Like, we have Mr. Aguilar, and no matter where you turn, it's college and career. Every um advisory college and career. Don't forget that if you need something, college and career. And I know my freshman year, I didn't know what that was because you didn't hear it much, but this year, more than ever, I really have been hearing it. And um and even just them going into the classroom, then talking about trade school. One of my friends who is a Latin American male um who was not born here, was even talking about going to a trade school and learning about wellbeing. I cannot predict how heartwarming that was to hear from him, just because that's not something you hear from Latin American men, especially not ones that were born here. So it just made my heart so happy to hear him say that that's what he wants to do, and just because he learned about peace. Let me done.
If we found our next spoke person.
Yeah.
Actually, I did take over um, I think his name's Hector. I took over his presentation about um if you want to join to be a, what is it? A tutor, a dual-language student tutor, and like opportunities that you have at HSP, and I just kind of took over that for him. So more than happy to it.
Do you remember your line looks like Erica? Yeah.
Um so first, I just wanted to give a shout out to HS, our partners, HSF, for all their help and contributions that they continue to do for our district. Um just really happy about our partnership and the things that we continue to do together. And then the other thing I wanted to um say, a comment was just around that self-evaluation. I think that a lot of times we go by like the trends of like, what is the kind of like the the careers that are like, you know, really uh trendy at the moment, and then what we've seen in our workforce is when that happens, it that creates these gaps or these um um places where we hadn't put any focus on. And I think when we're, when you're focusing on the on the student or the individual and doing their self-evaluation of more of like, well, do I like to, like you were saying, I think Dale, do I like to work with my hands? Or do I like to think and, you know, you know, do things more analytically? Or do I want to be outdoors or in an office? And kind of doing that self-evaluation of what kind of environment or career versus just kind of putting our students of, like, what's what's trendy right now? I think that's a really well thought out, like, I think Brooke was saying, this is a long-term process and a huge investment in our future community and our workforce. So I just wanted to give a a comment about how I think that is a much better approach um to this kind of work. And the question that I have is how can we double our internships for next year? What do I need to, what do I need to talk to? What do we need to do? Because if you think about how many students, high school students, we have for high schools, right? And and online and just the need that's out there, what can we do that this is something that we can advocate for? My daughter, Jessica Yulona, also did an internship. She was super happy with the with the internship this summer, and she was really glad um to participate, and and it really helped also um to be at the school before even, I think it's smooth, it created a smooth transition. So I just wanted to say, if we can, what do we need to do so that we can help on this?
Erica, I uh I think the first thing to note is sharing the internship site. I want to also acknowledge that's leadership and for team of ensuring that it's a streamlined process and and the information that's there, I think, is is really tight in this is how an internship experience for the employer looks. This is the information to know ahead of time, sharing that with our students. I think that's a a nice place to start in that conversation of of building demand uh for more internships. And I I do also think, you know, if we're shifting and focus more on a summer, uh a a higher volume of summer, then also I think that is uh acknowledgement to to staffing and and making sure that we support students and the employer um in this high-quality way that Hillsborough community is known for now. So I would just want to also make sure that we continue that focus um of ensuring that high-quality support, not only for the student, but also for that community partner as well.
Well done.
Yeah.
I think this is absolutely a celebration. I think that of the many things that make me proud to be HSC, this is absolutely one of them. And uh just want to to give kudos to you, to women in my spot, for seven years ago, planting these seeds and seeing how it's grown. I and I agree with you, Dale, that we absolutely have the right people um in this room that is that's taking charge on this. My question is really around how we make this available across the entire state? I mean, I think that this is something that um needs to be replicated and needs to be almost set up as a kind of a framework and a foundation of how we engage with the community, how we uh embed the career and college pathways into K-12. And I I don't know if there have been statewide conversations or what circles, you know, there's that that you all have been a part of, but whatever you need from us, um whether that's, as Erica would say, to double the internships or to really create kind of a platform for this to extend beyond even our Hillsborough boundary, uh we are here to help advocate. We don't want to talk about this.
Oh, I love it. I do believe that in about five years from now, we could have a conference and show and showcase the work that we do as a Hillsborough community. I really do believe that because I think give us about five more years to have the elementary component really in place. And I do think that we can showcase um partners from all over to to say, like, here's how you engage in your community in this way. Here's what it looks like. Um here's what it looks like in a classroom experience. But that is the vision of this collective, and that is the power of that. But so I do think that we can get there to showcase and and to share and support others in the work. Um but we are on the cusp of that, but not quite there. So I do appreciate that.
Maybe five years for a conference, but we're not that far from it. Let's be a convention.
Totally. Yeah, that's very true.
Looks like we have Monique with her hand up.
Hi, thank you for that presentation. That is really neat stuff um going on. I just had a question about the trades and how um how effective has that been or um how participatory have the trades been in this program?
Yeah.
Hi, Monique. Um the main partners that we have right now that we'd like to brag about would be the construction trades and the support for the program, especially at Glencoe, when Tom Patterson started the program with um Construction Tech. And um he's had builders and uh different companies supporting his program with materials and with expertise and whatever else. I mean, like, they're, they consult us directly on what's needed in the construction trade sector. And then the other big sector that we've been engaged in on a community-wide basis is the advanced manufacturing workforce, which is facilitated by the Economic Development Department of the city of Hillsborough. And they bring together a really diverse group of industry partners from like Genentech and Intel to TOSO Ports and Jira Semiconductor and Metaphy, who all make like literally like glass, metal, cancer treatments. But what they have in common is manufacturing process and efficiency and uh entry-level positions they need versus like engineering positions. So we work with them. They're actually hosting at the Brookwood Library Affair, where those folks will set up tents, and students and community members can come and get resumes. And so we're directly connecting with the advanced manufacturing work set uh working group so that we can influence the workforce pipeline that they need. And if it dries up, they die. So they key on us and our CTE teachers from computer science and construction and auto tech to have those students become interested in advanced manufacturing and take those jobs. They're also interested in paying for continuing education for those kids. So if I come out of high school, I get an entry-level job, they need to get me to PCC or PSU to get degrees and certifications so that I can become a higher-level employee for them. So that's a real grow-your-own thing, just in the advanced manufacturing sector in Hillsborough.
Monique, I would share, so how trades show up in our industry advisory committees for their voice as we refine our programs or to ensure that we have practices within our classrooms that meet that industry standard? How trades show up is what Kaylee was sharing, hearing is that not only when we're thinking about um presentations from post-secondary partners, and sometimes we would think maybe that's a two- or four-year college, it's also the presentations of trades and industry partner of what that looks like, for example, for an apprenticeship. What that looks like is our trades partner um also engaged in the conversation within the elementary kits and that feedback of what those are looking like at an early age and what that can potentially be. And we also, within our metrics, every year of our senior classes, we survey students at in the spring so that we can know at that point of time if students are interested in applying for an apprenticeship, going into the trade, uh going right into a community college or a four-year university opportunity. So we've been also tracking data from that senior interest survey for many years, even when I was a a school degree counselor myself at Glencoe. So that we know over time some of that predicted predicted data of just what is this looking like now? And how do we also um support students in what we're looking at over trend data from from that survey?
And then. Oh, sorry. Um and then one more question. Um as far as internships go and the students participating, do you get feedback at the conclusion of these internships and how things went? What went well? What went not so well?
Yes, Monique, such good question. So um every student does need to complete a student interest or a student um exit ticket as part of their either ELO experience, experiential learning opportunity, or even when they go to uh experience a career day, they provide their feedback on that experience. So that's part of um that culminating opportunity is also sharing their feedback of that experience um as part of.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
One last comment. Um I just want to say about the internship, it was really nice. Like, right before this, I was just talking to another student who did an internship, and she was telling me how much she liked it, and then I told her how much I liked it. And um I've been working on the filter for five years, and this is the first year that I've taken a month off just to do something else. Just kind of get a feel for teaching, because that was an option of mine. And I just want to say that it really opened my eyes and made me realize that that is what I want to do, not teaching. But having a a job like that, it made me feel like that is exactly what I want to do in my, with my life. Um and it really like solidified the fact that I do want to become a lawyer, because that is what I just, I like showing up to work. I like showing up to work, ready. I'm ready just to make change. So thank you.
So I had an opportunity to chat with Todd during my day job yesterday, and uh very proud of the program they have at Glencoe. Uh thanked us for listening to their presentation and get that, getting that program off the ground through the CCAC and presentation with the board. I'd also suggest that if you're a podcast person, uh recently, within the last month, I would say probably, uh think out loud, um had a discussion for, so it's a short segment, fifteen minutes maybe, uh with a student sharing her experiences in the aviation program there in Hillsborough, uh she goes to the airport. Um so that's an excellent listen if you have time for that. I'll maybe share with Bay if you remember, or something, but it was.
If we send it to the board update, I know we should resend it.
Yeah. Yeah, so it was a great, great segment. The uh question, but uh this is probably our first year with in-person and every middle school having a career action lab. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so um it's probably too early to tell, but like, how soon do we think we'll be able to ask some of our high school pathways if those career labs help shape students' opinions and help them pick the right path for them?
I love that. I think that uh as Dale was sharing on that secondary student needs assessment that we do, so we do that every other year. So I would think the next wave of that is when we should, remember this term, is when we should be asking that question. Because that will give us um a couple of years to get those going and then to be able to connect with us. Also, the reason why the investment of that uh CCP counselor and making that connection was invested in this year. Because every school now now has those action labs, and so that bridge that's from the high school to middle school perspective, too, are also helping that that helps to strengthen that. So they're gaining experience in the production lab, but they're also having someone that is making that connection of what's possible and available at our high school. But let's remember to put that on. It's a great, great one.
And I guess my last thing would be, my last thing would be that the, yes, starting in elementary school sounds great. Um I also hope we're teaching students that self-discovery is a lifelong thing, that you probably won't be pigeonholes in the fourth grade. My first college major was nuclear engineering. I kind of ended up farther from there. That's why I was eighteen years old. Still didn't know what I wanted to be when I grew up. So so I understand process of self-discovery, but also not, you know, saying that in the fourth grade, you need to figure out what you're going to be.
I agree one hundred percent. I think one of the beauty, beautiful things about being at K-12 is it allows kids to see even what they thought was really great in second grade that changed in fifth, that they had new opportunities in the ninth, new opportunity in the eleventh. I think there's a lot of pressure for our kids, you know, they get to ninth grade, it's like, what do you want to be? What do you want to be in your life? It's like, ah, I don't know. I I still don't know. Um so it's it's helping kids see the evolution of themselves as they have the opportunities. So excited about it.
Thank you very much, folks.
Yeah.
Definitely reasons we probably.
I'm going to quote.
I'm going to quote one. Our next item is an update on our strategic plan with Beth and Mike. More of a discussion than presentation, I think, probably.
Yeah, I guess I'm not expecting a whole bunch of applause unless you feel relieved of the fact that we are putting a pause on our strategic plan process. I apologize because I feel like we got you all excited about our strategic planning process in our last work session back in mid-September and interviewed you two, our consultants from Performance Fact. And we are still just very enthused about them and very much looking forward to working with them. But subsequent to that meeting, we got kind of the follow-up in which they were requesting many full days of meetings with lots and lots of participants and just kind of knowing what it was going to take to comply with our desire to have something in place by the spring so that it could inform our budgeting process and then just kind of thinking about how important it is to have a robust strategic planning process and ultimately a very actionable and usable plan. And feeling like with everything that is happening right now with COVID and just our return to all-time, everyday school and various things that we're dealing with, we just felt that to do the process justice, we would want to slow that down a bit. So we explored that opportunity with the consultants and asked if they would be willing to hang in there with us and maybe do some of their background work of reviewing the volumes of data that we provided them with from our accreditation process and from all of our work, getting feedback on our student investment account, priority areas, our student surveys, different things like that, asking them to take this time to go through those items. And then making a plan to reconvene in the late winter to ensure that our student surveys, which have been mentioned tonight, that we've been doing for a number of years, that those that come out in the spring incorporate the questions that are pertinent to them as well for for our strategic planning process and then that we convene our core team subsequent to that. So Mike, I know approached you, Mark, and Erica, who was so kind to participate in our evaluative process with the various consultants to see if that might be something that you fully support. We appreciate the fact that you said that you thought that would work. So just making sure that we publicly acknowledge the fact that we are requesting from the board the opportunity to slow that process down a bit. And not that it's not important, we're not, we're not saying that at all. It is so important and that's why we want to slow it down.
I think that's exactly what I was going to add. This is one of those processes that we do every five years. And in that process, it's different each iteration. And this time around, we're doing a full meal deal and we will involve a lot of community members and it's going to take a lot of comprehensive work to get this done. And because it is so important, we don't feel like right now, when people are stretched so thin that we really are refining our systems and keeping the doors open, this is the best time to really do that visioning and dreaming that we want to do as we set the course for the district. So slowing this down by six months or so feels like the right move at this time. So that, that's our request is that we get the head nod from you to go ahead and take our time with this, touch base back in the winter with our facilitators and then pick it up later in the spring.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to see, agreed with the idea to slow it down? I would just then like to have a republish of the timelines and the milestone.
That's not, it feels like a national story and it's reflected here as well, just how thinly stretched that would be. Do we still have fifty classified openings? Is that about right? So I mean, and so folks are being reassigned to classrooms, so everyone is stretched pretty thin. And we want, when we begin this process, for people to have the opportunity to be fully engaged and don't worry about.
All right, thank you.
All update says everybody, the whole cabinet wants to lead off.
I think it's Connie.
Yeah, I think that's Connie, Jordan, and Michelle. So we wanted to go ahead and go through just like through Kelly, please. Thank you. So we just wanted to talk about the different phases that we're in through our requirements. And so we're in phase one and that started September seventeenth and we are finalizing our verifications around that. We're pleased to say that we're down to fifty individuals that need to respond to the survey of the two thousand six hundred staff.
Five zero.
Five zero. That's enough. So we're pleased about that and the approvals are being sent to staff that have successfully completed the processes and we're looking through those pieces. And so just really appreciate everyone's efforts and the collective team efforts to back the strategic plan.
The phase one group currently have those submitted results, a little over ninety-four percent are coming in that vaccinated or will be vaccinated by the eighteenth. It's only, it's a little under a percent that'll be after the eighteenth. And then we've had about four point three percent of those phase one staff submit for an exception. And so phase two, we started on October fifth. And that is our supplemental staff and student teachers. The supplemental staff represents coaches, event staff, and other bus drivers and training and so forth. And so as I said, we started that on the fifth. We are processing those that have submitted their proof of vaccination. We're processing the exceptions that have been submitted for student teachers and bus drivers and train. Right now, all the other supplemental staff, we are not currently able to process those exceptions, both due to prioritizing and getting through the exceptions of the phase one staff, the student teachers and the bus drivers and train, and our ability to implement and manage the accommodations around what are needed for those exceptions as well.
Great, moving on. Phase three, volunteers and contractors are in phase three. So for volunteers, we're planning to roll that out in early November. Right now, there, there's no volunteers in schools, so we just stop at the front. So we know that they're in demand for sure. Our schools would love to have them. So we're, we have them in queue. And our independent contractors are folks that qualify for IRS rules as independent contractors. And for them, we will be requiring people to act on it. If they have an exception, we'll have to work with them, like Jordan alluded to, or need the safety departments for them and our students and staff and making sure that there's oversight in place for that. Our contract agreements or contractors that dispatch people to our schools, we have a COVID addendum that we're having them enter into with us so that they understand the requirement of making sure that the people that are working for them are, they're vaccinated or have an approved exception and they're required to notify us of specific exceptions so that we can kind of prepare and be able to provide oversight and protection to those folks that are not vaccinated.
Moving to the next slide. All right, so as of Monday around noon, we have launched our COVID dashboard. It is available on our website. This is a screenshot of it. Not sure if we want to go ahead and put the link to the live version on the website. But basically the difference, you'll see if you go to the website, is that up top, on top of the dashboard, is some narrative content that basically describes the purpose of the dashboard, what it displays, how it maybe differ, how the data that we present will differ from what people will see if they click into the Organ Health Authority reports. And then it defines some terms and then you can see the data here listed below. And we have every school listed, whether they have a current case or not. Basically, our dashboard is a point-in-time look at what's happening. And what's displayed in the, in the table are active cases. So basically, on the backend, on the collection end, that's feeding this database is a date, a start date, basically, of when we find out about either an active case or determine that someone needs to be quarantined. And then the end date, which is ten days after that. So they'll display live on this dashboard during those ten days. And then once, once that person is out of quarantine, which I guess potentially based on the situation may vary from the ten days, but once they return to school or work, they are no longer an active case. And then they'll just be accessible in the historical data that makes up these kind of graphs over time that you see. So that's how we have set up our database. And like I said, we described that in the narrative content above, over on the side here, in addition to the historical graphs that give you a more visual representation of how things are going over time. We have just the compiled statistics for, at this moment, we have sixteen students isolated. And when somebody is isolated, that means they are the ones that are either confirmed positive or presented positive for COVID nineteen. The number of students quarantined, those do not represent ill students. Those represent students who may have come into close contact with a person who is either confirmed or presented positive COVID case. And that could happen either inside of school or in their home environment potentially. And then we have the number of classes and CCL, so that would represent an entire classroom that has been moved into a quarantine or closure situation and will be in a two-week period of remote learning. Staff isolated is just like students, except it's staff. And then we went ahead and are calculating the percentage of students that are either isolated or quarantined as a, as a representation for our entire student body. So right now, point three five percent of students are impacted by either an isolation or quarantine, for example. We also have our staff vaccination data here and that represents what Jordan was sharing and that is what we have currently. That'll get updated as we process through all of the responses we have received and when we are through contacting those fifty folks who have not yet responded. Much kudos to Brian Brennan in tech services. Thank you to Jordan and to Tom Luba for allowing me access to Brian Brennan. I was ready to be on my knees crawling down there asking for support, but I didn't need to be because they were, they were willing to help out, which I truly appreciate. And then, of course, Michelle Brady, just their no thanks high enough, I can go to her and her colleague dominate on the contact tracing team. They are working tirelessly to support our schools and our students and families as they put the COVID situation.
Is there any difference in how teachers and schools are notified versus how this dashboard is notified? Because I know a teacher where today she was notified of four students. But on this chart for today, it was just three.
Well, this is pretty much data that, poor Michelle, who's dealing with every case that comes in when she has a chance to enter it in the spreadsheet. So there might be some lag. I wouldn't expect it to be immediate, like there, I, I won't say that it will ever be immediate, but we hope to have information current within twenty-four hours. So I would say if you look again tomorrow or certainly by the next day and go back to this day's date, then that information should appear to you. Our primary goal is not, I mean, we feel like the dashboard is important. We understand that it's important. But our primary goal is getting those communications to the people who are impacted immediately. So those communications to the teachers and to the families and to the students impacted, that's what's going to happen first. It'll show up on the dashboard later, just as soon as we can get it up there.
Because like I didn't realize it was like a person.
Yeah, it's very manual, unfortunately, so.
Just for the students' perspective, when there is a potential exposure, there is an entire protocol that has to happen behind the scenes that you don't see about.
Yeah.
It's very labor-intensive, but it requires very powerful executive and staff members to actually fan out, convey information, use a template, fill it out, get the information. And then in addition to all of that, that information also then has to be shared with the county health department. And so what I'm trying to get you to understand is that there is a huge amount of effort that goes when there's a potential exposure, before you can even say there's been an exposure. And so that's why, that's kind of the behind the scenes of what Beth is saying is that there's no way physically that they can update this simultaneously with getting that data. It's because the notification has to be first, has to be first, probably. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand that it's really complicated and I appreciate the work that goes behind it. I think it is really difficult and sometimes it could be like a logistical mess. But I was just making sure that like the sources of information at the school can be just as same.
And where did all the content trace it, right? Washington County still doesn't have the resources to download the content.
Exactly. Right, right. You're on.
The final slide is just a look at today's data from Washington County. It shows, I believe it's two hundred and seventy-four cases per hundred thousand, which is below three hundred. So I'm trying to keep you all positive about the possibility that the COVID vaccine curve is going down. It's good news, right? I mean, okay, you're welcome.
I have a, I have a question. So are we planning at all, so October twenty-sixth, fifty-fifth, we're going to make a decision on vaccinations for the younger children? Are we going to facilitate that in any way? Like are we going to have a vaccination event at schools? Make it as easy as possible for, for kids to get vaccinated? Like do we have a plan for that at all?
Yeah, we just met with Michelle Brady and Alma, who's been working on vaccine clinics and community health navigators. And so like with the ESD, we'll be continuing to work with Virginia Garcia, the providers, and set up tents and events and all that. There will be a big push to get the vaccines into the younger students.
Not really, just that information went out earlier this week, I think, or late last week, to kind of the providers, letting them know or just kind of preparing them and kind of encouraging them to get their orders in, for lack of a better term. And so I think it will just be a matter of, because there is going to be a different dosing that takes place for those younger students. So I think as soon as those doses arrive in our area, if they're able to support mass vaccination sites, we'll, we'll definitely be on board to outpost them or at least advertise them to our guidelines about where to go get them.
Yeah, because I imagine if kids react kind of like parents, that you're going to want to do that on a Friday in case you're a kid or else if we're going to have kids out, they, you know, have kids with vaccinations. And then too, this is most likely going to be like a two-part thing, right? So they're going to have to get their, their initial dose and then their second booster dose. So that's going to kind of like, I guess, just try to be as strategic about it so that, you know, we try and limit how, how, how it's time, you know, if we get off from school to be able to do this.
I think that's our last slide, so might give something to add or if you have, go for the question.
Nothing to add, thank you.
We have anything online?
So for the vaccination, I have a friend in my neighborhood at school, like did vaccinations. Like when we have these events, can we, or do we have like people there that just they answer questions and stuff like that? And I know that in some, I've heard people be like, oh, I got vaccinated. They said there'd be those side effects, but then I got a fever. And then I'm kind of like, we get a fever is normal, like your immune system's working. And like this having someone there to then show them and answer those questions. Because I know that like, so I just feel like a lot of younger kids, like seeing people or them, that's really scary. And so just having like someone there to like help use that and like talk to them. I know that like, I always try, but I get like vaccine vaccinations, I get like, I like have, want someone there to like hold my hand and like just act like, I know like the other kid, but sometimes like it's nice to have someone there, Charlie, like come to them or like use their.
or, like, use their attention as they're getting this.
Guess we would count on the health providers to provide that kind of service. That wouldn't be, it'd have to be the school would do, in a different thought.
And the questions have to be gathered by the health provider for sending to the dosing.
I'd like to say, as being part of a mass vaccination effort, it's required to be able to answer questions to a patient's satisfaction, and they actually need this, if like a packet that we have to take home with them with more information. So that is something that we've gone over here and over there.
Anybody else? You shared the responses from the staff, which are all pretty encouraging. Were there any responses, pretty uncomfortable, right? It's one of our guidelines. Were there any responses that, heck no, I'm not getting it, go ahead and fire? And so there's 50, 100, right? Like, so was there a significant number of those, or not really? No, that's.
We know there's going to be some staff that don't get vaccinated.
Sure.
And it's predictable, and we know that we're going to be communicating more about this in the next couple of days. But we have some concerns that we're expectation that we're going to be sharing with families that come next Monday. We need to, we're going to have some contingency plans that we share and we're going to just prepare our parents for that, because there will be some issues there. And same with nutrition services. There's going to be some issues there as well. So we're meeting first thing in the morning to talk about nutrition services. We had one about transportation today. So putting together plans, but it's not going to be perfectly smooth. I mean, the staff shortage is a very real thing. We've been talking about it for, you know, several months now, and it's going to come to fruition next week.
Seth, do you have a question?
I was just going to ask if you could very quickly elaborate. How big of issues are we talking? Are we talking Beth needs to go make a video issues? Or are we talking, like, we're going to send an email issues? Like, what's the scale of the problem? Do we know yet?
That doesn't feel like a very broad scale.
So it will be, I mean, it's hard to say, right? I mean, we're tracking down and having.
You don't know yet is a valid answer to that question, by the way. I was just curious.
I don't know yet.
We want to track a balance between awareness and not causing undue alarm. And we are going to try our very hardest to keep any impacts as far away from students and families as possible. It may not be possible, but that's going to be our hope. So, yeah, we're going to try to walk that fine line.
We believe in y'all. You can do it. We're rooting for you, all about what we can.
All right. That'll wrap this up. The session times, student representative, you want to start sub online or you want to start in the room?
I'll go ahead and start. I want to say that we're a little bit into the school year now, and I'm really encouraged by how well things have been going. I want to give a shout out to the equity and inclusion presentation tonight because I think that it ties in, or I really been appreciating the emphasis I saw throughout those presentations tonight of, like, making sure that we're involving students in our decision-making process. I know that's something we talked about at the board retreat, of being something that all three of us are concerned about, that you're hearing from more students than just us three. And I'm encouraged by the ways that I already see that showing up, and I just like to encourage people to keep doing that and to also be creative with it. Because the one thing I will say is that, like, an impression that I always get is that high schoolers especially are tired of doing surveys. We don't like them. We would like there to be less of them, and we would like to feel like they are actually important. That's a piece of feedback that I hear all the time across different circumstances. Like, we were talking about it in my AP Psychology class the other day. My teacher asked me to raise hands, and I, like, took account, or asked people to raise their hands, and I took account of them really quickly because I was curious. And, like, half the class said that that was a frustration of theirs. So I just, as we're going through with this, I think my one, like, overall piece of feedback for all those student engagement things is surveys can be a part of it, but I'd like to encourage people to look for more creative opportunities to outreach with people than just surveying the student body. I know that it's efficient, but I also feel like we've lost a lot of student buy-in there, and it's just something I'd urge people to be cautious about from my perspective. But that's for specifics. I'm really appreciative for everybody who saw today. It's been encouraging, I feel, to know that we're running into some problems, but we have plans to solve them, we're doing well. And I'm sorry that I couldn't be here earlier today, but I'm going to take this small opportunity to plug that it's almost fall play season, and that if you want, you should check out any of our wonderful theater department's plays, because everybody puts a lot of work into them, and it's our first opportunity to have live theater back in person for over a year, and we're super excited to be putting on our shows. So Bright Ideas, the last weekend of October. Come and see it.
Michelle, how about, fire away?
First, I wanted, like, I wanted, like, they're not hearing, I don't think they're hearing. But I really liked some Black Village family vibrant community this year. And I liked how, like, a lot of the things that I talked about today were really, like, we're talking about, like, equity yesterday and the political, the legal thing, and even just, like, just getting devices allowed. I like the equity access that we're at for the CC3 program and what. And also, it's like, I think that the CC3 program is, like, coming into whole girl, like, like, many years ago. Like, that was something really about whole girl, and something that I really appreciate about whole girl. Or, probably just me. And then, now my mind's kind of blanking. Yeah, well, I'll just end it here and say, go see Bright Ideas, October 27th, I think it is. Yeah.
Haley?
All right. So I know it's a little late and I missed the first part, but I really, I'm sorry I missed equity access and engagement in person, but I was online and I did see it. And I just, I wanted to say that when it comes to leadership teams, affinity groups, and equity teams, those are my three favorite things. And it really does elevate the voices of students. Like, just equity teams, I've worked with the South Meadows one. I have worked with the Hope World High School one. And I even have the opportunity to work with the teacher equity committee and for Hope World High School. And it just, it's really, it really feels like we have staff who support us and who are listening and who want to make a change just like we want to make a change. And when it comes to middle school, just, it makes me feel so hopeful for the future because the things they're talking about are stuff that not even us high schoolers were talking about. So just being able to sit into their meeting and just watch them and watch the way they use them was really, it was really powerful. And when it comes to affinity groups, that's my, one of my number one things this year is working with those affinity groups. And I am a Metcha officer, and we're really getting those clubs out there. We're getting Asian clubs, BS, Ying, GSA, Metcha. We're getting all of them out there so that students know that they have a place where there's students just like them. And then when it comes to leadership teams, this year, also, I joined Spinning Government, which was a really crazy experience because most of the leadership roles are from white students. And I attend Hohai, where most of the students are Latino students. And yet, we're not in high positions like that. So this year, the integration of more Latino students is really amazing to see. And although we have had a couple issues with just with that in itself, I think we're doing so many cool things. There's so many, so many cool things coming up, just, so all students feel welcome, and especially students of color who are now in leadership positions. So I still think I'm kind of sad that I missed it in person, but I really loved that. And I just loved today's, today's work session was just really nice. I really loved it. Even, like, the Chromebook, like, I loved everything, especially, like, College of Career. It was everything. I appreciate it. I really liked it. I think that's all.
All right. Super intense, though.
I would just, I'll be, I'll just like to thank everybody. So you hear about Katnall the time, and you hear us do these presentations, but really just the amount of effort behind the scenes to make sure that systems are up and running. It really felt like this last week was the, I won't say the first one. It felt as smooth as it's felt in 20 months, this last week, in terms of systems and having protocols in place to deal with some of the issues. That does not happen by accident. So everybody in this room, apparently, we've been thanking Jordan tonight. Thank you, everyone, for all of your.
All right. I think we've probably pinged pong evenly back and forth from online. So Monique, would you like to go first?
I'd like to say I do, I appreciated the College, the Career and College Pathway presentation the most this evening. A lot of good things happening and going on there. Unfortunately, I had technical difficulties. I had questions concerning the equity presentation, but I will take that offline and talk to Francesca about that. And that's all I have this evening.
I already hear that. Jordan, tech value is pretty good.
No, it wasn't on that end. It was on my end. I couldn't get my button to work.
And she is? Anything?
Really enjoyed the presentation. So thank you all. Excited about where we're headed.
Lisa, anything bad?
Good evening, everybody. I would just add appreciation to all the members of the Black Village Family PAC who made time in their busy lives to join us this evening. I know that it can be tough to do that, and it's nice to see them and hear their feedback, and I'm excited for us to create that feedback loop with our PACs so that we can continue to build those relationships. So thanks, everyone, and I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person tonight, but I'll see you next time.
Vera?
Yeah, so, I mean, I remember not too long ago, when I think about silver linings from the pandemic, what has happened, not just, like, sorry, I need to go water. But, like, in work, innovations that have behaved during that time, I think, has, like, sprung us forward, I don't know how long. Like, before the pandemic, we voted to not have one-on-one devices. This had come up before because we did not screen that, right? You remember that?
Yep.
And now here we are, one-on-one devices for our students with accessibility to the internet. Like, who thought that that would happen in the timeframe that it happened? So, I mean, I think that is fantastic. And then also, the CC3 program, and I don't think I still wrote this, but it has an impact indirectly as well. And I remember going to one of the meetings, and I saw the presentation for aviation science, right? And so I was like, oh, that's pretty interesting. You know, it's amazing, it's great. And me and my oldest son, and he graduated before the program even took off here at HSC. And so I was telling him about that, and he was inquired. He is now starting at that program at CC3. Because of what I learned, told him, and he looked into it, and now he's doing that program. So, I mean, the benefit that has in our community is going to be phenomenal, like, ways that you guys aren't even expecting. So, I mean, it's really fun to do that. And that's all I have.
Erica?
Hey, everybody. Thank you to the staff for all your wonderful presentations. I know it takes a lot of time to put all those together and then, you know, answer all of our questions. I just want to say that I appreciate all the work that goes into that. And I also just wanted to share that I think one of the things that I took away more from this, and I hope that as we think about our annual review that we've been talking about with our SRO program, was that, and that feedback loop that we're talking about with our PACs was, I really appreciated the information that they provided and how they felt like the things that they were able to provide for feedback during those kind of finding interviews really made an impact in how the processes of the program have changed and/or are evolving. And so I really, just, I think that that's just something so valuable for us to see, how as we have created these spaces for community to be in the room with us as we make these decisions, they can actually see the difference of what they were able to provide, and those actions are happening. And so I think just ensuring that we don't miss that and how rewarding that feels, especially because that process took really long and we were really intentional, and I just wanted to make sure that that doesn't go without notice. And again, just thank you for all the work that you do, and I appreciate all of you so much.
Anthony? Nothing to say? All right. I guess it's me. I would also echo everybody's thanks and gratitude for the presentation. And I would just say that if we had a quarter for every time someone said, "I appreciate Brooke Noah's enthusiasm," we'd never have any budget issue there. And I think you're right, Mike. I think it does feel like we're getting better at this end of the day, so. All right. If there's nothing else, then we are adjourned, and I'll see you here in a couple of weeks.